Okay, and staff, we're ready? All right, welcome everyone. Today is October 3rd, 2022. My name is Jason Branham. This is the Richland County Planning Commission meeting for October 3rd, 2022. All right, staff, would you please confirm the following? In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, a copy of the agenda was sent to news media persons requesting notification and posted on the bulletin board located in the county administration building. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Delage. All right, ladies and gentlemen, as a reminder, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to county council as to whether to approve or deny zoning map amendments and whether to amend the text of the county's land development code. County council will conduct its own public hearing and take official votes to approve or deny map amendments and text amendments on a future date to be published by the county. Council typically holds zoning public hearings on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Please check the county's website for updated agendas, dates, and times. And please take note of the following guidelines for today's meeting. Please turn off any cell phones. Audience members may quietly come and go as needed. Applicants are allowed up to two minutes to make statements. Citizens signed up to speak are allowed up to two minutes each. Redundant comments should be minimized. Only addressed remarks to the commission. Do not expect the commission to respond to questions from the speakers in a back and forth style. That is not the purpose of this meeting. Please no audience or speaker exchanges. No audience demonstrations or other disruptions to the meeting are permitted, nor are comments from anyone other than the speaker at the podium. Please remember, the meeting is being recorded. Please speak into the microphone and give your name and address. Abusive language is inappropriate, will not be tolerated. Please don't voice displeasure or frustration at a recommendation while the Planning Commission is still conducting business. If you have any questions or concerns, you may contact the Richland County Planning Department staff. So now on to agenda item three, which is for motions for additions to or deletions from the agenda. And let's also deal with any motions to amend the agenda at this time. First off, I want to move to delete item 9B4, which is in relation to a motion I made that already passed by vote at last meeting. At the last meeting, staff indicated it could draft some alternative language to the stricken ordinance. I've since been informed that alternative language might be presented, but not earlier than sometime next year. It's, it should be deleted from today's agenda. Is there a second?
There?
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
Could you please repeat that? I did not hear that.
This is to delete item 9B4, because that motion has already been voted on and passed by the commission. And staff might potentially propose some alternative ordinance at a later date, but not today.
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We delete item 9B4. I'm just going to go ahead and take these one by one. Steph, would you take the vote on that?
Pryerson?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Serks?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Mr. Chairman, just clarification comment?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
I clearly misunderstood in the last meeting when I thought that when the vote was for staff to come back and bring that back, and then we were taking action. I did not, I thought that that for staff to take the matter and come back with something. So I misunderstood what we voted on last time. So that's why I voted no.
Gotcha. All right. Any, any other motions for additions, deletions, or amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if I missed it in the, in the meeting package, any information on item 9A? Absent that, then I'd move for that to be tabled if there's no direction from staff on that.
Mr. Price, could you speak to that? Are there any updates?
Yes, and we actually will, we'll we'd be willing to accept that motion. Had a conversation today with the maker of the motion, Councilwoman Newton. And she will, we're going to meet sometime in the next couple of weeks to kind of go into I guess more of the weeds of exactly what her motion was and kind of go through some things before we bring it back to the planning commission.
Thank you. That was a motion to delete 9A, motion by Councilwoman Newton to table it. Staff, would you go ahead and take a vote on that? Well, I'll, I'll second the motion. Yeah, there you go.
Those in favor, Branham?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pryerson?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Serks?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dennis, which cases have a staff recommendation of approval and have people signed up to speak in opposition?
Sure. I wanted to make an addition to the agenda.
Okay, all right.
Yes, I wanted to put it at the bottom somewhere for, to talk about section 26-5.13, green development initiatives.
Okay. All right. That down. That's section nine. It could be the new or I guess. And that's just an item for discussion. So that was, tell me again, the code reference?
Section 26-5.13.
All right. All right. Let's go ahead and vote to add that to the agenda. I'll, I'll second it.
The motion is to add a discussion for section 26-5.13 to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right, those in favor, Branham?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pryerson?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Serks?
Aye.
Motion passes?
All right, any other motions before we get to? Who's that?
Call me for a vote.
Oh.
Oh, I apologize. Durant?
Aye.
Thank you. Otherwise, we just go on to look at some of the typical amendments we would make related to setting up our consent agenda and figuring out what items might need to be removed from the consent agenda. So, yeah, anything else, Mr. Dennis, before we do that?
Yes, I moved to pull case 22-016MA, case 22-028MA, and case number 22-032MA from the consent agenda and send case 22-029MA to county council for approval.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Price?
Just for clarification, we are still on item three, correct, the additions and deletions?
Uh, yes.
So we haven't gotten to the consent agenda yet.
Well, we haven't gotten to the consent agenda. Did you, I, I feel like we would usually just do this right now at the additions or deletions. Is, am I misremembering?
I always kind of thought we did this when we got to the actual items purposes at the beginning, because we're not adding or deleting anything from the agenda at this time.
Just moving it?
Yes.
Chair?
Uh, yes, Mr. Dennis.
I'm going to pull that till we get done with section three, four, five, and six.
Uh, sure, I had no issue. Any, any objection from the commission? All right, none there? All right. So we'll look at item number four. And staff provided the commission copies of the transcript of several prior meetings and a work session, including a work session from April 1st, 2021, and meetings on June 14th, 2021, July 12th, 2021, November 1st, 2021, and February 7th, 2022. And I want to thank the staff for, for getting that to us. Just as a preliminary note, based on county's records, are, are we missing any minutes to fill in up to our, you know, where we are now?
I think right now we're up to completing the 2022 minutes. And hopefully at your next meeting, we will have those, but this should actually complete all of the minutes we've had, I believe, from 17 up until today.
So what, what's the most recent set of minutes that we approved?
Um, at your last meeting, the September 8th meeting, you approved the June 21 meeting, 2021 meeting.
2021, but we had some others we had approved after that, didn't we?
You mean before that?
I thought we had approved some minutes for meetings that occurred after June 2021? No?
No, sir, not that I have. So what we did was we went through all of our records. And so the, these were the minutes that we have, that we had not been approved by the planning commission. We're just in receipt of these, and we got those out to you for your review and for you to give approval to if you deem they're necessary.
Do we have any gaps after we get these approved? Will we have any gaps up to June 2021?
No, sir. I think this, this should complete 2021.
Okay, all the way through the year 2021?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there, and I don't have it directly in front of me, but there are some minutes from one meeting a few years ago that weren't recorded, so we just didn't have that one. But other than that, all of the minutes should be available to the public going from at least 2017 up until the end of 2021.
Okay, and then February 7th, that was our first meeting in 2022, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Right, well, we're on our way to getting caught up with those, having those minutes in place. So only those members present for the meeting should vote on a motion to approve the transcript for that meeting. And because different members were present at each meeting, we will conduct separate votes for each meeting. And before we vote on each set, we want to address any requests to amend those minutes. So I guess let's first look at the, the minutes from the April 1st, 2021 work session. I know there were several areas that in, in each one of these, as I recall, that were listed as inaudible. I'm just looking back now. So on the title for, the heading for the April, it says it's April 1st, 2022. With the agenda set April 1st, 2021. Have that, do you have the record of what the actual date was for the, the transcript there? I'll look back at my calendar.
Mr. Chair?
Price?
I do believe that we're going to, I'm getting a copy myself, but I believe that that should be April 1st, 2022, because that is where you held your work session. That was on a Friday after a special call to meeting.
Um, the body of this transcript says that this is the meeting for April 4th, and I can see right out the gates, we're pulling cases and things like that. So this looks like it would be for April 4th.
Those are April 4th, 2022?
Yes. Uh, that was the regularly scheduled meeting for April. That seem accurate to, to those that were in attendance? That would have been me, Mr. Yonki, Mr. Metz, Mr. Dennis, and Mr. Taylor. Mr. Yonki? What some of the case numbers were? 22-001. And if that's the case, it'd look like we just need to amend the heading on the the record that was presented to the commission so that it reflects Monday, April 4th, 2022. And also while we're looking to confirm that, does anyone have any request for amendment or changes to what was in the, the document? What do you see, Mr. Price?
Um, not for this particular one. Or is, um, any changes?
Okay, but it does look like this is just a, an error and
Looking at it, this is correct. So the heading was incorrect. It was not from the work session. The heading should be, as you stated, Monday, April the 4th, 2022, just a regularly scheduled meeting.
All right, so I'll move to adopt this document as the minutes for the Monday, April 4th, 2022 meeting with the amendment that the date listed at the top should reflect Monday, April 4th, 2022.
Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
We also get that changed on the, our agenda. So when we go back and look on the agenda itself?
All right, so I'll make that part of the motion to, also to amend our agenda to reflect under item four. The last date should be April 4th, 2022, and should not say work session. All right, that's the motion. Is there a second?
A second, then.
All right. Steph, would you take the vote?
All right, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and call it all of the members that are present and those who don't, can't vote. They can state for the record why they are not voting for it.
Okay, yes.
This is just for the April 4th, 2022 minutes. Those in favor of approval, Branham?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki? Yonkey?
Aye.
Johnson?
Abstain.
Fryerson?
Abstain because I was absent.
Metz?
Aye.
Durant?
Abstain, I wasn't there.
Serks?
Abstain.
And the motion passes.
Okay. Excellent. Let's look at again, back this 7th, 2021. I know I had, had one change to request on page six, line 16. That's just the name of a road that was referenced. The road is spelled in the transcript, T-A-M-A-R. The road in fact is spelled T-A-M-A-H.
Which minute is it though, sir?
That's June 7th, 2021.
And what page, what page and line was that?
That was page six at line 16.
Excuse me, what did you say the correct spelling is?
All right, Mr. Fryerson, that was T-A-M-A-H. In as well, on pages 25, at line seven and 27 at line 16. In the conversation, there's references to RSD designation. You don't have an R code, nor is it proposed in the new code. It seems like that should be RSE, as in estate.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else have any requests to amend those minutes? That transcript? Mr. Yonkey?
Like the? Seven?
Check that. Body does reflect June 7th. Body of the document, that is. My calendar shows we would have met on June 6th, but that was a Monday. Did we move that meeting for some reason? Staff, what do you have on that for a record? Mr. Yonkey?
One, that was a Monday.
Okay. Yeah, I think I was looking at the wrong year. Thank you, Mr. Yonkey. That looks right. So I guess I'll make the motion again because I requested certain changes. So in addition to those changes to the document presented, the, the motion would also include altering the agenda at item four so that the June 2021 date is shown as June 7th as opposed to June 14th. Any other notes on that before we proceed with the vote? All right, so that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Yonkey. Let's please take the vote.
All right, but this is, this motion is for the approval of the June 7th, 2021 minutes with amendments to the date on the agenda page from June 14th to June 7th, and with corrections on page six, line 16, page 25, line seven, and page 27, line 16.
Yes.
All right, those in favor of the motion? On Branham?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonkey?
Aye.
Johnson?
Abstain.
Fryerson?
Aye.
Metz? Durant?
Abstain.
Serks?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Okay, let's look at the transcript presented by council dated for the July 12th, 2021 Zoom meeting. I do not have any proposed changes to that transcript before we vote on it. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none, staff, whenever you're ready, if you would take the vote.
All right, those motions for the approval of the July 12th, 2021 minutes from the planning commission. Those in favor? Branham?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonkey?
Aye.
Johnson?
Abstain.
Fryerson?
Aye.
Metz? Durant?
Abstain.
Serks?
Abstain.
And the motion passes.
Okay, next is the document presented as a transcript for the November 1st, 2021 Zoom meeting. I don't have any changes to request to this transcript. Anyone else have any requests to change? All right, hearing none, staff, would you please take the vote?
Are those in favor of approval of the November 1st, 2021 planning commission minutes? Branham?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonkey?
Aye.
Johnson?
Abstain.
Fryerson?
Aye.
Metz? Durant?
Abstain.
Taylor? Serks?
Abstain.
The motion passes.
Last one I have is dated February 7th, 2022. Is that right? Am I missing any?
No, sir, that's, that's the last, um,
Okay.
set of minutes that you have.
I've got just a few here that I wanted to request amendment. Page four, line two. The words "the gender" should be replaced with "agenda." That was in reference to the addition and deletions to the gender. So that should be agenda. And then on page 12, line 14, the word "quest," I'm sure should be "request."
Then what line was that, sir?
Line 14 of page 12. Then on page 36, at line 19, the word "be" should be replaced with "please." Will staff please conduct a vote? All right, and then on page 37, line 15, there's a reference to Chairman Gilchrist, but that should say Chairman Branham.
That was line 15, correct?
That's correct. And on page 61, line 19, the word "eating" should be "union," I'm quite sure. It's a reference to McIntyre Union Camp, Westinghouse, Pineview. Does sound fun. At that, and then on page 74, line three, there's a reference to the end of, and it says 202. It should be 2020?
20.
It's missing the final zero, so it just says 202. It should say 2020.
2020, yes.
Yeah. And on that same page, at line 21, it says "seven of us president." I'm sure that should say "seven of us present." Next page, on page 75, there's a, on line eight, there's a reference to interpersonal rapport. That should be interpersonal rapport.
Enter?
Yes. And that's all I had.
Chair?
Mr. Yonkey?
I have one.
Yes.
All right, go. Thank you, everyone, for being patient as we're doing some housekeeping here. I know the staffs work really hard to get these agendas out. Thank you, guys. Page 84, line four. Just change it to inaudible. I don't know what I was trying to say. It's, looks like gibberish. At the time, I was looking at the website, looking at the current planning commissioners. I don't know what it was saying. I'm sorry.
There's some pages.
Line four and the first word of five. No one's fired.
Page 84, line four.
Line four. Starts with December. And five, and with fired, strike that as inaudible. I'll try to speak clearer.
Right. Other requests to amend that transcript?
Yeah, just.
Mr. Durant?
Don't mean to be ever as a vote. I-E-Y-E, I think it should be A-Y-E.
Yeah, I noticed that too. Thanks, yeah. A-Y-E.
Is that on a particular page or is that throughout the document?
Do, do you have that?
Well, it's on more than one occasion.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's in that transcript?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, thanks.
And so what was that change?
It's just changed the word E-Y-E in the votes to A-Y-E. Okay, thank you, Mr. Durant. Anything else? All right, so I'll make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Please take the vote, Mr. Price.
Motion is for approval of the February 7th, 2022 planning commission minutes with change, with some revisions to page four, line two, page 12, line 14, page 36, line 19, page 37, line 15, page 61, line 19, page 74, line three, page 74, line 21, page 75, line eight, and page 84, line four. And then also with the, the change of, of spelling of "I" throughout the document.
All right, yes, thank you. That's the motion.
Those in favor of the motion? On Branham?
Yes.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonkey?
Yes.
Johnson?
Abstain.
Fryerson?
A, A-Y-E.
Metz?
Aye.
Durant?
Abstain.
And Serks?
Abstain.
All righty.
Yeah, thank you. Motion passes. We're happy again to be moved into the year 2022 with, with the approved minutes and Mr. Price, will those be posted online?
Yes, sir. What we'll do is we'll get this back to, to the transcriptionist with the amendments that need to be made, and once we receive those, we'll then put those online.
Okay. Have a sense of how long that'll take?
They seem to be relatively simple changes. I hope to have them in the next, next two weeks.
Okay. Right, move into item five, which is a remapping, restart and text amendment proposal process update, and did speak with Mr. Jensen before today's meeting. He's got some information that he will present as I kind of work through the dialogue of, of how things are going with that process. And then we'll move ahead to the individual app amendment cases after that. So again, last year, staff presented a proposed full replacement of land development code. After review by this commission and some modifications to the draft, along the way, county council voted to adopt the new replacement code. Included in the new land development code is a new set of zoning districts. Every parcel of land in the county that is not inside a city or town has a zoning designation assigned by the county. And with the adoption of this new code, each parcel must be assigned a new zoning designation. County staff prepared a draft map. Earlier this year, the planning commission was in the midst of reviewing and considering revisions to the draft map and receiving input from the public when county council voted to direct staff to restart. and receiving input from the public when county council voted to direct staff to restart the map drafting process. The county planning commission and county staff restarted the mapping process and began discussing potential changes to and ramifications of amendments to the land development code. The new baseline starting point for the mapping process became the zoning district translation table found in the newly adopted land development code. Any mapping that varies from the translation table has been very minimal and has basically been out of necessity. Those variations have been discussed in our meetings. Additionally, our running ledger of mapping and proposed land development code text amendments is linked on the county planning department's website. At our last meeting, staff presented the current draft map incorporated in the direction of the commission. Mr. Jensen, could you tell us a little bit about that map? Is it available for public viewing?
Thank you, Mr. Excuse me. Thank you, Chairman Branum. The map, the map that is posted currently was the one for discussion today, the M one. So we will be incorporating today's discussion in it, at which point the entire map will be posted on the website for viewing. So a few days after this meeting, the determination or the findings of the council today in regard to the last remaining M one related zones will be added to the map that was discussed by planning commission at the previous meeting. And that entire map will be posted for the public.
Okay. And that, I know that's on our agenda for later in the meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right. So one important element that will continue to influence the map drafting is the process of proposed amendments to the text of the newly adopted land development code. If you've looked at today's agenda, you can see there's several motions related to recommendations to council to amend the text in various ways. One of the ways we've proposed change relates to properties currently zoned R U or R R. Most or all of these will now become A G, H M, or R T. And I've asked Mr. Jensen to share some charts that show the differences in the amount of residential units that can be built under the two thousand and five code versus the code that was adopted in twenty twenty-one, and then versus the proposed version of the planning commission. So, Mr. Jensen, do you have that ready to share?
Mr. Delage, will you bring that one up? Oh, sorry. I gave you the wrong order. It's the other one. It's the one with the R U density. There we go. Can you please zoom in to the top line there as large as we can make it possible? Thank you. I know this will not be incredibly legible to everybody. Hopefully those at home can see it fairly well. Essentially, the two thousand and five code, which is still in effect right now, which uses the R U zoning designation for primarily, it's almost, I want to say about eighty percent of the county is zoned this. It's a huge amount because we have so much rural area still in the county. And so the current density in the R U zone, which is the second column there, if you look up, the minimum lot size is thirty-three thousand square feet. And then it says in text, one acre. Thirty-three thousand square feet is not one acre. But for whatever reason, that's what the two thousand and five code says. You have to interpret that in favor of the property owner. So thirty-three thousand square feet is the smallest lot that you could theoretically create in the R U zone right now. So what this chart did is it converts it to density numbers for easy understanding of what that means. So theoretically, you could have one point three two units per acre in the R U right now at a thirty-three thousand square foot lot minimum. However, what that doesn't take into account are you have to construct roads and basins and other kinds of infrastructure along with it. So even though it's point, you know, thirty-three thousand square foot lot, you don't actually get one point three units per acre because you have to net out all these other improvements. So in the planning and in the development world, the rule of thumb is eighty percent efficiency. So basically, whatever the lot size is, you have to assume that you have to also put in twenty percent of that toward this infrastructure. So that's what you get. So that's what this chart is. This is a very simple spreadsheet. And so I did a couple of different scenarios here to show the comparison between R U and H, A G, H M, and R T, which are the three different zones that R U is being split up to in the twenty twenty-one code. So you can look there. It's very self-explanatory. It just says that if you had ten acres, for example, and you were in the R U zone, theoretically, this is how many different lots you could have or create in these different scenarios. So in the twenty twenty-one scenario, you can look at the line there in the first one down, and it shows this is how many you would end up with. And then under proposed, this is what planning commission recommended in a previous meeting, changing the densities to in the R T, H M, and A G zone. So that can kind of show you, you know, if you had an R U zoning designation, and we're going to go to the one at the very bottom, which is an easy one. So if you had, if you had a large amount of acreage, five hundred acres, say, and you were a developer or you were the owner of the acreage and you wanted to sell to a developer, this is what you could expect to yield down there. So under the current R U zoning, you could anticipate five hundred acres would yield five hundred and twenty some odd units. If you look under, in the other categories there, and you look, and you can see what A G, H M, and R T would be, you can see what those corresponding numbers would be. So again, twenty twenty-one tells you, this is how many you would get as adopted right now by council. Proposed is what would be the yield if what the council or what the planning commission recommended at the previous meeting were to be adopted by council as an amendment. But you can see it's fairly substantial. Effectively, you know, we're talking, you know, in some cases there, especially in the A G zone, which is the commercial agricultural areas, huge reductions in the number of units that would be developed in the rural areas. When you get, when you move to the H M and the R T, it's still a substantial difference. But as you go to what the planning commission approved in the last time, those numbers start to more approximate what could theoretically happen in R U. And just for the commission's benefit and for the benefit of those listening in from home, the difference, the H M, the A G, and the R T are created specifically so you could have gradients, so you could blend heavily rural areas into urban areas. So the idea would be that the A G zone would be your commercial agriculture, your big farms. You know, the raising of animals and so forth that might not be appropriate immediately adjacent to a suburban neighborhood. And then you could blend those zones in, go to an H M, which is a larger lot, still has a lot of the same uses as the A G, but not quite the most more intense commercial ones. And then R T would then be a zone that would be really close adjacent to a suburban development. It's literally rural transition to transition from urban to rural.
I would even say it's a transition from suburban to rural.
Suburban to rural. Yes, sir. Yes. So that is my presentation to you in terms of an analysis of what the planning commission is proposing versus what's already on the books versus what the adopted code has been since two thousand and five.
Thank you. This is, so this is one of the areas, one of the few areas where the planning commission proposed a change to density. And I know, I believe this was on my motion. I, I really wanted to try to do a better job, in my opinion, of balancing, you know, the interests that were at play there. We are striving to create areas that, you know, are preserved as being truly agricultural in nature. At the same time, I know Commissioner Taylor, who wasn't able to make it here today and sending us an email just this afternoon saying he couldn't come, he forwarded a communication from a resident out of Lower Richland County who again questioned, you know, what happens whenever I want to try to subdivide some land, potentially pass it on to heirs. So I really see this as a balancing of those two things. As you can see, under that scenario, A, if there's, if you've got five acres, if you were zoned A G under the version that county council passed, you, you can't build anything there when it comes to a dwelling unit, a house. What we've proposed is to knock it down so that you only have, have to have something like, I think it's three and a third acres or something like that to be able to build a house. Because otherwise, R U to A G, it was going to mean you had to have ten times more land to build a single house. So we've tried to kind of bring that back down where it's still much less dense than it could have been under R U. But at the same time, hopefully, there's some accommodation. It's not so much of a shock to the system of people that own property that was zoned R U. That's now going to transition to A G, H M, or R T. And again, we have proposed that as a minimum threshold to be zoned A G, you would need to have at minimum thirty-five acres in a tract. So that's certainly the much larger pieces of property in the county that are currently zoned R U. So yeah, that was the intention there is to show that we're trying to propose some compromise, some moderation, but it's still going to greatly decrease the potential for density in our areas that we want to maintain as, as rural, agricultural in nature. Any questions or comments from Mr. Jensen while he's at the podium?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes. Awesome.
Mr. Jensen, I think the correspondence that the chair referenced that Mr. Taylor forwarded to the commission in my limited time at this desk is representative of three or four comments during the public comment period that we heard, I believe it was in the last meeting, where the theme of, I'm trying to pass this on. It's a certain amount of acreage. And it was not at that threshold pretty some acres. And what does this mean? Trying to subdivide for my children, heirs, et cetera. Given that, and given that we are heading into the public comment phase, on the agenda, I would ask what other extraordinary efforts are we making to provide a plain English presentation like this for clarity to the public? Certainly, there are those who are here. But how aggressive are we specifically reaching out to those owners of three acres and larger? That this is the time to come out and be heard. This is the time for public input, not just advertising in the paper, not just running a single notice. That meets our legal obligation, but going beyond our legal obligation and affirmatively trying to encourage public input to be aware of what is actually happening. That would be my request is that we take that very much seriously and really try to advocate for getting this information before we continue to take action and have a larger forum for public input.
I mean, just off the top of my head, know that staff sent notices to every property owner in the county where they notified them of the potential rezoning district. So that was a very direct notice that I think really helped spur public participation. Anything else from the staff on that?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jensen.
Thank you. Yes. Once we are comfortable, the planning commission, this is your recommendation, we will engage the public in a media campaign that will include various forms of outreach, not just, you know, in the paper, the usual that we do. We have a communications team now here at the county, and so we will take advantage of them to reach out, to go out into the community, to do the kinds of things that we've done. We've done so many, I can't even begin to count how many times we've gone out in the community already, but we will do it again once we feel that this is gelled and we can take it out. And we're not saying to the public, well, it could be, it might be, you know, we'll go out and we'll say, this is where the planning commission has landed. Give us some input. So yes, we will do that, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from staff or anyone else before we proceed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Jensen, for that information. Is there anything else you want to share right now? I know we'll come around to other topics later in the agenda.
Yes, if I may, I have scheduled right now to do a brief presentation on the classifications of different types of structures and so forth, which will include the table that the planning commission has recommended so far in terms of uses in residential zones.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, let's go ahead and do that now.
Thank you. Mr. Delage, if you would cue that. There we go. So what I have here is a very quick PowerPoint. I'm not going to read through everything here because I'm going to make this, we'll post this, and then we'll make it public and we'll also provide it to you. I want to talk just really quickly about something that we discussed approximately three or four months ago. In particular, what is the definition of the different type of residential structure and unit? Because sometimes in the real estate industry, they use one term. Sometimes the federal government uses a different term. Sometimes we and local government use a different term to describe something. So I wanted to really quickly use some standardized terms here so that everybody knows what we're talking about. So really quickly, in the United States, almost every single residential unit is designed for one family. Even though you may see, you know, something that says multifamily and so forth, they're not. Because multifamily means literally more than one family is living in the unit. So things that, you know, you see on flyers, property for sale says multifamily unit. No. That is a single family unit in a multiple unit structure or multiple unit building. Only one family is allowed in that single apartment or that single condominium, not multiple families. So that is a common term that is misused. So we are going to try to correct that in our code. So we're going to, using more accurate terms to describe what is being proposed. Next slide, please. So again, a dwelling unit, this is a paraphrase of the building code. In the, in the International Building Code, it says for it to be a dwelling unit, you got to have a bathroom. You got to have a bathing area. You have to have a toilet. You have to have a bathing area. You have to have a kitchen. You have to have a sleeping area. And then you have to be connected to utilities, whether it's a sanitary sewer or a septic tank. You have to have a potable water connection. You have to have an electrical connection or a power generation of some source. If you don't have these things, it's not a dwelling unit under the building code. A family, this is the other key part to understand. So there are multiple definitions of what a family is and isn't. Federal government, the Supreme Court has upheld these various definitions, but it's very simple. A household, a family is a household, considering that consists of persons related by blood, marriage, or some other legal appendage connection. It can be up to two unrelated persons and their children. And it can be up to four unrelated persons. And then that's the citation there for the federal regulations that define this. So that is generally speaking, throughout the United States, the definition of a family. There are some tweaks here and there, but generally speaking, that is what a quote unquote family is. So when we say a one-family dwelling, we're referring to this. A dwelling unit that has a family in it. Next slide, please. These are just some fun. I put these together just really quick. I'm actually going to use this at some APA presentation in the future. So I did this, but really quickly, a detached residential unit or one family. Those are some examples there. Next slide, please. An attached residential unit. That's a quick definition, and those are some examples. An attached residential unit just means that it's a unit that meets the building code definition of dwelling unit for one family, and it's somehow physically attached to another unit. But interestingly enough, for whatever reason, most people don't consider accessory dwelling units, like a basement apartment, to be an attached dwelling unit. They say, oh, no, that's a detached home. No. But it's just one of those anomalies. And not today, but some other day, I'll explain why they do that. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, here's an example, again, of a multi-unit structure. So this is what you, people commonly say, it's a multifamily dwelling. It's not. It's a multi-unit structure. It's a structure that has multiple single-family dwelling units that are attached to each other. Those are all different examples of different kinds. Next slide, please. Okay, here's a townhouse. A townhouse is a multi-unit structure. It's a subcategory of multi-unit structure. And basically, they're side by side. There are no stacked units. So there's not a unit on top of another unit. All the units are connected laterally. That's a townhouse. Okay, next slide, please. These are not townhouses. They may look like it, but they're not. And you can tell, so the one on the left, that's actually three units stacked on top of each other. It just looks like a townhouse. The one in the bottom middle, those are just two detached, single-family homes. They just happen to be, look the same, and they're just They just happen to be, look the same, and they're just on lots next to each other. The one in the middle is only one story high. A townhouse by definition is at least two full stories in height. So even though they're side by side, they're not townhouses. Upper right corner, those are just stacked units. And the bottom right, those are just side by side detached homes, not attached. Okay, next slide, please. Patio home. This is kind of popular in the, in the industry right now, in the homebuilding industry. A patio home is essentially an attached, are attached residential units that are one and a half stories or one story in height. What is one and a half stories? If you look, a space in the eaves or with gables is considered to be a half-story because the centerline pitch of the roof of the house is no higher than if it was a single-story. And so that's called a one and a half-story, just in the industry. And so patio homes are generally one and a half stories in height and attached to another unit. Okay, next slide, please. Townhouse versus a patio home. So bottom right-hand corner, that would be a patio home. Again, you can see the centerline of the ridge, the double-water roof has, it has gables. It's no taller than a single-family ranch house that would be next door to it. Upper one, again, it's a double-water roof with gables. That would be considered a row, patio homes in a row. One in the middle, those are two full stories in height, so that's a townhouse. The one on the left, even though it has a pitched roof, two full stories in height, townhouse. The bottom is the trickiest one of all because of how far set back the second row is. It's actually a townhouse because that's a full story above there with a double-pitched roof up above it. Okay, next slide. Oh, I forgot to add on the slide, these are, this is, the unit description is manufactured home. A manufactured home is a home that is built on a chassis, in a factory, and that is brought completely finished to a site and placed on the ground and connected to utilities. If you don't connect it to utilities, it's not a dwelling unit. Again, that's, remember, that's one of the definitions of dwelling unit. It must be connected to utilities. So even though this unit is on a chassis, you wheel it to the site, you put it down on a permanent foundation or tie-downs. The chassis remains in place, but the wheels are taken away. So these are all manufactured homes here. These are just examples of different types. Next slide, please. Interestingly enough, you can have a multi-unit manufactured home. They exist. Duplex and threeplexes on a chassis that you can literally pull in and drop down. We don't discuss that in our code. We probably need to because they exist. That if we want to allow them or not allow them, we need to address that somewhere in our code that theoretically, you could have a manufactured, multi-unit structure. Okay, next slide. See, I put this together really quickly. Okay, these are accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units are, have been around for a very, very long time, but they've kind of become trendy again. For those of you who ever watched Happy Days, and yes, I'm showing my age here, the Fonz lived in an accessory dwelling unit above the Cunningham's house. So if you've ever seen that, then you know what I'm talking about. Accessory dwelling units are very common in residential neighborhoods that are experiencing growth, especially with multi-generational housing, where they will convert detached garages into units for children or grandchildren. Sometimes the parents will move into the detached unit, and the family will, and the children and their family will move into the primary dwelling. Very, very common in urban areas. So if you look up there, the upper left-hand corner, that is a single-car garage that was converted to a dwelling unit. In the middle photo there, you see there's a basement apartment, and there's also a, an accessory dwelling unit in the rear. So that's actually three units theoretically in that neighborhood. The one in the upper right-hand corner, or the right-hand corner there, again, that is a single-family home with a purpose-built accessory dwelling unit over a garage. Okay, next slide, please. Live-work units. This is something that kind of was cool about 10, 15 years ago, and then the pandemic came. And we have so many work-live units now, sort of de facto work units because people moved home and started working out of their homes. And there was no zoning in place to allow this or anything. They just did it. And so you will have many, many people who now have home offices who did not have them 10 years ago. It was a result of the pandemic and also the Great Recession that many people started moving their businesses home into their homes. And there was no zoning or anything that allowed it or did not allow it. People just did it. And so this idea of live-work, the two slides, the one in the middle and on the right, are actual live-work units from the Salt Lake City area, an art space project. And so that's one unit where you're looking at. On the right, you're looking at the end where the artist has his workshop. And on the left, you're looking where the artist has his sleeping and cooking area. And so that is a true live-work unit by definition, where the person literally can live in their unit and work and do something, have some kind of a business in the other end of their unit. Okay, next slide, please. And we're going to, there's no images for these because I just ran out of time. But, excuse me, a zero lot line simply means that you've taken a townhouse or you've taken a patio home, and you've put each unit on its own lot. Instead of having two, three, four units on one lot, each unit now has a lot, so there's a property line that runs down a wall somewhere. That's all that means. Next slide. Group quarters. Group quarters is a generic term for multifamily units, or true multifamily, units where multiple families live in one unit. And next slide, please. Dormitory is a type of it. So again, a group quarters, the more typical ones are dormitories, barracks, emergency shelters. Those are all types of group quarters where more people than the definition of family allows live together in one dwelling unit. Next slide. Okay, so here's the chart that is currently in the 2021 code that was adopted by council. I've gone through and I've redlined everything that the Planning Commission asked me to, to strike. And I've amended some language there to make them more accurately fit definitions. I'm going to propose, actually, once this meeting is done, I'm going to rewrite this entire chart and make it clean and easy for everybody to read, in addition to the, what I'm going to do for the lower Richland folks in terms of to understand density. So, but as far as I know, this is reflective of what the Planning Commission motions to date have been in terms of adding and removing uses from different zoning designations. Okay, so there you go. That is my presentation, Mr. Chair.
And soon, we look forward to getting a copy of this electronically so we can take some time to review, particularly this principal use table and within the context of some of the additional definitions you provided. Is there anything from the rest of the Commission, from Mr. Jensen, right now? If not, we will proceed with an opportunity for public input about the, this ongoing countywide zoning map drafting and text amendment process. If you have any input as to the motions listed on item nine of today's agenda, now would be the time to offer that. And yeah, we're striving to see if we can get together a final recommendation for this, sort of the end of this Phase One of the process on our November 7th meeting. And we will, additional public input at that time. So appreciate everyone's patience and just getting this information out. We want to do our best to make sure that we're clear about where things stand right now. There has been a lot of change over several months, and it can be hard to keep up, even for myself. So thank you, Mr. Jensen, for presenting that. All right, Mr. Dennis, would you call the first person signed up to speak? And again, you have two minutes to share whatever you'd like to share. And if you would please share your name and address before you start your comments. We'll ask staff to keep the time on that. Mr. Price?
Yes, I believe Mr. Johnson referenced an email that he was, that the Planning Commission should have received from Commissioner Taylor. Just want to make sure that each one of you received it. If not, I have copies of the email for you.
Right. Thank you. Dennis?
All right, first person we have signed up to talk is Pam Seklin House.
Let's just try to avoid, you know, there you go. There you go.
Buy a house with the intention of renting it out for house parties. For example, the house next door to me is approximately 2,100 square feet and has three bedrooms. The ad on Airbnb allows events with 25 or more people. The new owner has put four to six beds in each bedroom, plus they have multiple sleeper sofas. It seems to me that this is, this activity is the same as allowing commercial zoning in residential areas. They have effectively converted a single-family house into a motel without being held accountable for standard safety precautions or laws that motels would operate by. This is also affecting my water and sewer. I have done a little research, and it seems that certain areas have proposed zoning restrictions to simply limit the number of beds in these short-term rentals. It seems a popular example would be to limit these to two occupants per bedroom plus two, meaning you would be allowed to have one sleeper sofa. So a three-bedroom house such as my neighbor's 2,100-square-foot house would allow a maximum short-term rental occupancy of eight people. I can live with that, and it would prevent house parties that are destroying our peaceful neighborhoods. The massive drunk pool parties at my neighbor's house is a revolving door. I live next to a Motel 6 now. It should be pointed out that these investors are driving the prices of single families up, making it harder for our own Richland County residents to achieve the lifelong dream of home ownership. These investors can afford to overpay because they are financially benefiting at me and my neighbor's expense, the expense of our county's fire services, EMS services, and sheriff services. And believe me, I call the sheriff's department. I think this is a zoning issue since these investors are essentially operating a commercial venture in a residential area without oversight for life, safety, fire, and ADA compliance.
Thank you very much. Right.
All right, next we have Mr. Ergle. I mean, Ms., sorry.
Thank you. Please do not make me a liar or have to retract my statement to WTX about being this good government and responsive to the people in action. And Euclid versus Ambler Realty, and the US Supreme Court upheld local zoning against takings claims when it was clear that it was not arbitrary. I know you're trying to get it right. I hear that. Technology is our friend, yes, and your computer-generated map, okay. But where's the ground-tracing of that map? Site visits, changing the lines on the map for a selected few, good intentions? Don't know. Does it pass the Euclid test? Not sure. Carrying capacity studies. Expert witnesses, citizens advocacy. For Hopkins and Blythewood, what follow-up discussions in your meeting about the right to farm act, which you were presented that was, it could be a violation of? What current study is underway? The heat study, the lower Richland dangerous flooding study that's coming out soon? Currently, there is no public record of your decision process. Give us a report of the price tag, please, of the economic and environmental costs, drinking water, air quality, public transportation, public health, and the sewer expansion. We're paying the bills, okay? We deserve to know. Most importantly, and I know you're trying to get this right, but your consequences, your decisions are. If you are willing to hold the hand of that mother in the ER whose child is gasping for breath from asthma, from particulate matter and diesel emissions, and you're willing to be and comfort the families whose homes are going to wash away due to urban sprawl, and the people who, the vulnerable in our community who cannot pay the bills, then you have earned the right for public service. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, next we have Ivory Jackson.
Thank you. My name is Ivory Jackson, 2178 Congaree Road, Eastover. I'd like to first thank you for this outline that shows the timeline and actions taken. And that's what one of my issues happens to be. Well, one regarding what was just presented, that was not in layman's terms to me. Like, I don't imagine the folks who were sitting at home. Two, on September and the eighth meeting, based on what you have decided regarding the 35 acres, three are left, three to 35, but you have 35 or more. Pretty much, I didn't see any difference because it limits me to seven minimum acre lots. I mean, or acre, or three, the HM, because still there's a three-acre minimum. Not sure if I understand why, but anyway, I couldn't see the difference. And even though you gave that presentation, it still is like we're going to be limited. One, I'm the homeowner in one area as the HM, the other, I'm an air owner with a 35 or more acres. I'm concerned, but still, we only got one notice, and that was that notice that told me I went from RU or AU to RU, whatever it was, RU to HM. That's the only notice. After that, that sparked our, that sparked all of this generation from those of us who've been coming to these meetings. Other than that, we haven't heard anything. We need written notice, especially those who this is going to definitely affect, those who have fallen into that category, especially three or more acres, where it'd be a minimum from now on. There's not been written notices. You put something in the paper. How many folks are getting in the paper these days? But anyway, but that's my concern. I'd like to have more clarity. What was presented today needs to be more clear. I consider myself an educated person, and that didn't do me any good. You're speaking in units, you're not speaking in acres. What's a unit? Sounds commercial to me. Doesn't sound, doesn't sound like a, I can get one acre, two acre, I'm talking five acres to divide my land in two. So that's my, so my complaint. So, but anyway, once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bernice Scott.
Thank you. I'm Bernice G. Scott. Live at 328 Willawin Road, Hopkins, 29061. I've been on county council for 20 years, and I've been fighting that land use thing for a long time. We don't have much, but we do have land. And when our parents and grandparents leave us a piece of land, and we have three and four kids, like Mr. Jackson and Miss Irvin up there, we plan on leaving to our kids. So when you're talking about splitting the land up, we know we don't want a lot of stuff on us. We just, it was 100 and some acres in front of me. Representative, late Representative Jimmy Beers owned it. He sold it. The developer came and put each house on an acre of land without water and sewage because they had to put an acre because of the separate tank and the well. I live on a separate tank and a well. That's okay. It's a nice neighborhood. I don't see why, if I have 50 acres of land, I can't leave my kids an acre of land each also. I love the developers, and I'm going to tell you, when I was on council 20 years, I helped everybody I could and talked to the community. But this is the lower Richland area with our land. And our land need to be inherited towards our kids. Please take that in consideration. And when you're doing a survey out there, whatever, please call me. Or Miss Jackson, she now retired. I've retired. We can help you to find the people so you can get the feedback, what you need when you start splitting up land. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Chair, that's all we had signed up. Yes, come on down.
Thank you. I'm Penny Evans, Rosanna Evans, and I live in Mill Creek Estates, 8400 Little John Drive, Columbia, 29209. I've been in the home since '82, and I'm calling, I'm concerned about case 22-016MA.
Okay, Ms. Evans, if you'll hold up right there, because right now, we're just doing public input as to the very broad land development code. We do want to have individual public hearings for each of the specific properties that are up for today.
So what I signed up for today doesn't pertain to this?
Just, if you'll just hang on for a minute, we're wrapping up, like, general public input, and then we'll go to property-specific.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
All right, so that concludes item number six. Now it's item number seven, the consent agenda.
Chair.
Dennis.
Yes, sir, I would like to pull case number 22-016MA, 22-028MA, from the consent agenda for discussion and send case number 22-029 along with the road names to county council for approval.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Price.
Mr. Price.
Just for the record, we're just going to use that as a placeholder, but there are no road names for you to approve in the October PC meeting.
Is the applicant here for the 22-029? Yes, okay, hang tight, hang tight. But let's go ahead and pull that one too, I'd like to hear from the applicant on that one.
All right, so I'll amend that motion to pull all cases from the consent agenda for discussion. And of course, case number 22-031 has been deferred, so that's not even applicable to us.
Mr. Price, we still go through the motions and taking a vote here? I guess we do have to, since they're listed as by default being on the consent agenda, so yeah. Let's pull, the motion is to pull all of the map amendments from the consent agenda so that there would be debate and discussion, and we would hear from anybody signed up to speak on those. Again, all right, got a motion in a second, staff, would you take the vote?
Those in favor of removing all map amendment items from the consent agenda? Branham?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pryerson? Metz?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Taylor? Sirkz?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes.
All right, thank you. So there's no road names today, we'll move on to the first map amendment case, which is 22016MA. Staff, whenever you're ready, if you would present that case, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item is case 22-016MA. The applicant is John Stevenson. The location is Longwood Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone 138.5 acres from light industrial, M1 zoning designation, to RSLD, which is residential, single-family, low-density. Staff recommends disapproval of this request as we've, as we feel that the proposed amendment is not consistent with the objectives of the 2015 comprehensive plan, which encourages residential development as secondary uses proximate to employment centers. Additionally, further policy guidance under the Economic Development Center corridor, future land use designation notes, secondary commercial and residential uses should be located along primary road corridors proximate to employment centers. The subject is not located along a primary road corridor. Again, for these reasons, staff recommends disapproval.
Any preliminary questions for staff before we hear from those who signed up to speak on this case? Okay.
Have one for staff.
Yes, Mr. Yonki.
Jack, do we have any updates on the Richland County Penny project? I believe the route of a continuation of Shop Road is very close to this area. I drive through here as my commute every day, so is there any update on that? There was like an option four of in-design phase, phase two of Shop Road extension.
Oh man, this time I don't have any information off going in.
All right, anything else for staff before we hear from those who are here to speak? Okay, Mr. Dennis.
All right, we have a Tom Milken? Millican?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, county council members. My name is Tom Millican, excuse my voice. I live at 21 Cedarwood Lane, Columbia, 29205. I'm representing the landowner who's owned this property for 60 years. They also own another 350 acres, which I recently sold to Richland County as part of the Pineview Industrial Park where Mark Anthony Bruin is. Property's been zoned for M1, but we've taken it to the county. Jeff Ruble at Economic Development had offered this property to the county. They have no interest in it because it's next to a residential subdivision. It's been owned, I've been listening for, over the home probably 15 years. With an M1 zoning, absolutely no interest, it's on a secondary road. And I don't know if you have maps. Mr. Parr is going to pass out some maps. The first map is an S curve on this piece of property that allowed, that separates this property from all the land that the county owns. No trucks are going to be able to, trucks are going to have trouble making that curve. When the county proposed zoning changes over a year ago, this particular track is shown, the first page of what I'm passing out, was given an R3 designation. The county was going to change it from M1 to R3 since it was next to Mill Creek subdivision. Let y'all get those maps. By the way, we met with Ms. English last week and reviewed all these properties and these maps, and she was very much in favor of changing it to residential because it was next to Mill Creek, a very 45-year-old established residential subdivision, as I'm sure you'll hear from her later. This, on the second page, the first page.
Mr. Millican, that's your time, thank you. It's two minutes per speaker. Thank you.
All right, next we have David Parr.
I'm David Parr with Power Engineering. I'm here to represent the applicant. I'm an engineer and I live at 3117 Wilmot Avenue, Columbia, 29205. I wish I could finish it up for Mr. Millican, but what I'm really here to say is, out of all that, we just, the developer just plans on putting 118 lots. That's really it, I think the more could probably go on there, but that's his only plan. Thank you.
Next we have is Penny Evans.
Thank you, I'm Penny, Rosanna Evans, and I live at, in Mill Creek Estates, 8400 Little John Drive, Columbia, 29209. Our biggest concern right now in the neighborhood is along that road. Longwood Road is a lot of speeders, especially since they built the Mark Anthony Brewery and the Jit she was there. I mean, I have a, one of the ladies attending here today live on Longwood, and it's very difficult for her to back out of her driveway. So I believe the proposal for the 138 acres is in a flood zone. I'm not sure, but that's what I'm told. And I don't see how you could approve residential homes there. The traffic is bad, and I think we finally got approval to get speed humps in the area. We're going to have a traffic study in December. So work is ongoing, we're trying to get, there's a bad curve on the lower part of Longwood Road, as well as the S that the gentleman earlier spoke about. And if you come out of your lane in that S curve, you'll hit someone head-on. So there are a lot of traffic concerns we've been trying to address for the last three years. And we're having a lot of difficulties getting everything accomplished for the safety of our neighborhood. So my question is, why would you build on a flood plain? And is the community going to be accessible through Mill Creek? Will you need to come through Mill Creek to get to your homes? Will the homes be gated? Will there be sidewalks? We're all in favor of residential development, we need more homes, but we just want a partner, a good partner for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Chair, that's all we had signed up for this particular case.
All right. Didn't ask earlier, but were there any questions for the applicant? Or, now that we've heard from the speakers, are there any questions or comments for staff or otherwise?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Yonki.
Can we ask staff to turn on the zoning layer? The zoning layer for a second. I did a quick Google search, Richland Penny Projects. There is a Shop Road extension, it's in design. But if you pan the map down, all that extra traffic is coming down Longwood Road because we've extended, not we, but South Carolinians to Richland County Penny Project. That's extended now, and you've got Mark Anthony Brewing and Jushi, like somebody commented. And people are using that as a cut-through now, all right.
If you would just give us a quick moment, we're going to pull up the proposed Shop Road extension that you mentioned.
Thank you. There's an interactive map when you get there, but it's just like a polygon of a potential area. I went to some of those meetings a couple of years ago, might have been before COVID, and there were different versions, 1, 2, 3, 4. I received a letter in the mail saying that number four was the one they would go, go with, and then the pandemic happened. So, you know, I live near Leesburg Road and I'm finally seeing it get widened. It took a long time, so this might take a long time. But it looks like in designs, M1, as it stands now, there's other businesses that go near there in the one south part of that parcel. Northern part of this parcel looks like wetlands, people are saying. There it is, all right. It was just a broad polygon that, hey, there's going to be a phase two here, but phase one happened, and there's all your traffic. I'm going to comment at 100 units possibly? I'm counting houses, that's like, that's a big increase for what's there already. The roads need some work there too. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
What was the rationale behind staff's recommendation?
Again, our recommendations are based on the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. In a way, we give a reminder of what the comprehensive, the adoption of the comprehensive plan was, particularly for this particular area, I'm sorry. So we look at the comprehensive plan, and it did not meet all of the criteria for residential development in this area, just strictly from comprehensive plan.
Thank you. And so addition to, in addition to that, we're to look at the similar zoning in the immediate vicinity, the need and the justification for the application, and the impact of the proposed rezoning on the surrounding area. Yes, Mr. Yonki.
The impact that I would note, if we change this and then broke it up to put housing there, is the extension to Shop Road Part II. Wouldn't it be able to bend that way? And the traffic would increase on Longwood Road because there would be nowhere else to put that. Kind of right where the cursor is now, is where that public information meeting showed how the road would bend through there. There'd be all their industrial opportunities for this area for what's zoned M1 already. There is potential for a business going there, it is M1.
Mr. Yonki.
Mr. Chairman, in support of Mr. Yonki's comments and move staff's recommendation on A206.
So, Mr. Johnson, your motion is to send it to county council with a recommendation of disapproval. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, any additional debate before we take the vote? Hearing none. Mr. Price, would you please take the vote?
All right, we have a motion for the disapproval of case 22-016MA. Those in favor of that motion? Branham?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pryerson?
Aye.
Metz? Durant?
Aye.
Sirkz?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes on 7-1.
Okay, thank you. Again, we're a recommending body, so this matter will now move to county council for vote and hearing. Okay, next case is 22-028MA, right? And Mr. Price, whenever you're ready.
The next item stated, case 22-028MA. The applicant is Elizabeth Swan, the location is 6217 Tinox Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone 1.43 acres from general commercial, GC, to light industrial, LI. Staff recommends disapproval of this request. Again, it's not, it's not consistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan for this area, which designates this area as a mixed-use corridor. And our main reasons were due to the intensity of the uses allowed under the requested LI zoning designation, it wouldn't be in compliance with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. The plan recommends that mixed-use corridors areas be transformed to allow for the integration of uses for a variety of use types, including residential, commercial, office, and institutional. Based upon its location along Tinox Road and the types and locations of certain surrounding zoning districts and uses, the area would not be appropriate for industrial expansion, would it be compatible? Again, for these reasons, staff recommends disapproval.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dennis.
Yes, we have the applicant here, Elizabeth Swan.
Good afternoon, everyone, I'm Elizabeth Swan. I live at 39 Indian Creek Trail, Lexington, 29223. I have met with, we purchased, we're a Boise, Idaho company, we're a small manufacturing company. We went to business license and was told we can't use. Um, we went to business license and was told we can't use commercial, general commercial. Although on our website, when we are purchasing it, it says you can, according to your adopted, which I did not understand had not been done yet. So we purchased the building and, um, when I went to for the business license, they, uh, the staff actually helped us and recommended L1, although we don't need the intensification of an L1. We really only need an M1, but according to M1, you have to have two acres or more. We only have one point four three. And as you can see on the map, all the additional M1s around us are all under one point four three. So I don't completely understand that, but I guess I'm kind of also asking for some help. I don't, we don't need the L1, but what we do that's creating the L1 is, um, what we have, sometimes we purchase manufactured parts for our location and sometimes we have to fix them. So there's small, very small fabrication going on. Um, so I guess it's one of those businesses that kind of cross between things and we're not really quite sure where we lay, but we have, um, the intentions of hoping to create a very nice looking building on Two Notch. If you actually look at the buildings around us, there's three or four of them that are completely in disarray, completely gutted out. And I really want to create that. Uh, we've decided on Columbia, South Carolina, because I really, really enjoyed just the feeling when you get here. Um, it's a, it's a great place. I obviously love it because I bought a house here. Um, so I just really wish you would consider the L1, even though it's not really what we want. Or I guess it'll still say general if you guys pass this. So again, I'm kind of at a loss, but it's in your hands. Are there any questions for me?
Um, well, you said, Mr. Price, have you had an opportunity to speak with the applicant?
I haven't directly, but, um, it must have delayed and other staff members have.
So delays, you feel like you have a pretty good sense of, you know, what they do for business and what their needs would be for zoning?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, I did not personally visit, but one of our land use inspectors, um, were able to meet them on site, um, kind of take some pictures. Um, I would say that, uh, for the most part, uh, the things that kind of trips the requirement for it to go to a light industrial or another intense industrial district, um, would be the assembling of the pieces together. Um, and then also it's just an answer, I think the outside storage, um, where it's typically in a GC, you would see certain product, um, displays rather than actual, um, machinery or bits and pieces related to the primary use.
Any of that change, you know, assuming the twenty twenty-one LDC takes effect with the current parameters and definitions for GC, does any of that change to her benefit or her favor?
If the previously proposed map had gone through, that recommended zoning would have allowed for it. Um, now, as far as for the direct equivalency, I'd have to check the land use table to see if it, if the GC would allow it to say for certain. Um, but I do know that in the previously map and she, the applicant had mentioned that, 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 that they made the purchase decision off of, it would allow for a use like this.
Um, I think, Mr. Johnson, please go ahead. You had a comment.
You said you'd have to check the equivalency table?
That's correct. Uh, specifically, I'd have to check the permitted use table. Um, so. Yes, sir.
If I may, what I was looking at right there is under the industrial, under the products of goods. Underneath that, you'll see manufacturing, assembly and fabrication light, and it is permitted under general commercial.
Would, Mr. S, was there anyone else signed up to speak on this?
Yes, we had a Randy Purdy.
Hey, well, let's give staff an opportunity to look this up while we hear from the next speaker.
I'm, I'm the owner, Randy Purdy, Precision Pumping Systems, sixty-five fifteen Businessway, Boise, Idaho. And, you know, we came here and expanded our business because this looked to be a very business friendly, you know, area. We really liked the, we liked the person, you know, the people, we liked the community. Um, this was the guidance that we were given when we purchased this property, uh, a year ago. And we certainly felt like we were, uh, now we may not have understood that that was not fully implemented, but we felt like we had made a, a purchase of good faith based on this guidance. And that fell, what we do fell with, well within the use. Um, we don't store much stuff outside, honestly. Little bit of pipe. Um, there'll be some finished goods, small pumping stations that are wrapped up and ready to go on a truck. We, we will bring approximately twenty, you know, well-paying jobs to the, to the community. We've already invested over fifty thousand dollars in the building to basically, you know, bring it to the shape that it's in. Um, we buy from mostly local fabricators. So we will do around four million dollars in business next year, which will probably buy about a million dollars of that from the local fabrication community. Uh, we buy, you know, we use tin vendors, sheet metal welders, those kind of people. We bring the product together. We do final assembly and testing and we ship it out. Thank you.
Here, we don't have anybody.
Hi. Thank you. Have any questions for me?
Yeah, any questions for Mr. Purdy? Thank you. Dennis.
So, you know, I'm sitting here looking at this and and we're moving through with our LDC rewrite and we haven't done anything and I haven't brought up any changes and I don't think anybody else has brought up any other changes that would change this for the new LDC, uh, in the future. I mean, right now, yes, it would not fit. But here in a couple of months, it, it, it would be permitted. Um,
Well, I think we're waiting to hear from staff.
Yeah. Kind of what I'm looking at is have an update on that?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Price may have some add, more to add to this, but, um, per the definition, for the most part, it would fit. Um, we would just have to take a look at the outside storage as a component of that because the manufacturing, assembly and fabrication light, uh, specifically mentions, um, uh, out where basically everything is conducted within side, uh, the building. Um, but I mean, I think, I think that's something minor compared to as far as for what staff could work with the applicant.
Is, is there any way? I mean, going to light industrial definitely does not fit in this area, but, you know, the new code kind of gives businesses that have such a, that doesn't need to go light industrial, allows them to go general commercial in that area. Um, I'm kind of looking at it, scratching my head going, like, is there a variance they can get with zoning appeals or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay.
Chair, have a question.
Mr. Yonki.
Yes.
I'm just looking at this too. And it looks like all the existing zoning around it is M1 slash GC. Does this fit into M1? I know we need to look at this for what is presented to us GC to LI, but.
Well, the M1, um, that's not, not a viable zoning designation, um, upon the adoption of the two thousand and five, that was kind of pretty much grandfathered in. However, it was no longer allowed, applicants are no longer allowed to, to apply for the M1 zoning designation. So to get light industrial, they would have to go to LI.
Thank you.
And I think one of, one of the, maybe one of the distinctions as you're kind of looking at it is that M1 seems to be more, um, on the opposite side of Two Notch Road, going back to a Shakespeare in that area. It was probably a little bit more industrial, but the parcels that are typically along Two Notch Road are have more of the general commercial zoning designation.
But it is contiguous.
Yes.
Okay.
That was Mr. Johnson's question.
Yes.
Just for the record.
Yes.
Chair, have a question.
Right.
Uh, I, I didn't pick up on it, but the applicant said they relied on something when they made the application. What was that again?
If you'd step back to the microphone, uh, Mr., what was it? Mr. Purdy.
We thought, we assumed since this was sent to us, that this was the current zoning. It said it had been adopted. So we went, look, yep, sure enough, there we are, right here on Two Notch Road. Where this app, you know, this zoning, it allows this. That's what we do. Okay, we'll make the purchase.
The zoning was, in, in the adopted code, it, it was proposed by staff on the zoning map that it would still be GC or was it gonna be something different?
Uh, if, Mr. Chairman, it's supposed to be EMP under the proposed map, which is the employment district.
Okay. We think it would fit under the new definition of GC, uh, under the twenty twenty-one adopted code. Based on the activities, as you understand them.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any answer to your question, Mr. Durant?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yonki.
I will throw out a motion to approve this, which is going against county with the reasoning that it is contiguous with the area. What's going on behind it. Um, the use, we have a manhole manufacturer, contractor's office, HVAC warehouse, pawn shop. We know all those things can change. I always look at things like it's an empty plot of land. Look at all this in this area. It does kind of fit what's right behind it. That would be my reason to go against staff.
All right. So that's a motion for approval for the reasons Mr. Yonki stated. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Motion is, uh, to recommend approval, uh, to county council of case two two zero two eight MA. Staff of you, take the vote, please.
We have a motion for approval of case twenty-two dash oh two, oh two eight MA. Um, those in favor? Random?
Oh.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fryerson?
Aye.
Metz? Durant?
Aye.
Sirkz?
Oh.
The motion passes, um, sixty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Price. So again, we're a recommending body and the case will now go up to county council for a final vote and a public hearing. Thank you. Next case is two two dash zero two nine MA.
We do have the applicant here. He did request he doesn't have to speak unless we got questions for him.
Uh, I mean, it, it's, are there any preliminary questions for staff on this case before we hear from the applicant?
Um, let me read this into the record first.
Okay, sorry. We are getting, getting ahead of it, I guess.
The, 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 um, next item is case twenty-two dash zero two nine MA. The applicant is Douglas Putlock. And the location is ten twelve Bickley Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone three point seven six acres from neighborhood commercial NC to residential, single family, medium density RS dash MD. Staff recommends approval of this request. Um, it's located within a neighborhood activity center. Um, and according to the comprehensive plan, neighborhood activity centers provide medium density housing for the neighborhood, um, located near the center of shopping and employment. The proposed zoning district is consistent with the objectives and policies outlined in the comprehensive plan as it will permit those uses. Uh, again, staff recommends approval of this request.
All right. Anything before we hear from the applicant? All right.
Uh, we have Douglas Putlock.
Hi, my name is Douglas Putlock. Um, I live at four oh two Cabin Drive, uh, Ermo, South Carolina, two ninety-six three, uh, which happens to be the purple looking lots, uh, just on the opposite side of Valentine Elementary School, um, in that plan. So I, I've lived there for twenty years with my family. And, uh, we purchased this property, um, about, uh, back in December. And we're looking to, uh, build a family home on it. Um, and so it was neighborhood commercial. Uh, it's been, it's sat vacant for, oh, years. Um, it's the local drug hangout uh, for kids right next to the elementary school. Uh, we're gonna solve that problem and, uh, we're gonna put a house there. But right where that zoning, uh, the little bubble is, to the right of the finger is where there's a house back there now. That is the, uh, that's the party house. Um, which you'd be amazed at the things that go on in that place. And then where the other uh, bubble is in the, uh, the left side is, uh, is an existing home that was there. Um, which is also in complete disarray. So, you know, we wanted to clean it up and, uh, and we wanted a place to build a house, frankly. So, that's about it.
But, uh, what was the reason for asking for the RSMD designation, uh, as opposed to something that would be less dense residential use?
Just because, uh, that's, you know, that's what the surrounding area is, uh, with the exception of what's across the street. Um, were and, um, you know, that's, I guess that's where we just fell. So Milford Park is the neighborhood that is right there and that's, that's where we live. And that's all residential MD.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Chair?
Mr. Dennis.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to send this to county council for approval.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And, um, before we take the vote, if we could, just wanted to question Mr. Price again about, um, the recommendation for approval. It's on the grounds that it's located within a neighborhood activity center. Okay. All right. Thank you. If, uh, if there's nothing else, uh, Mr. Price, would you please take the vote?
So just looking back over that, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
All right, so we have a motion for approval of case twenty-two dash zero, two, nine, M A. Um, from neighborhood commercial to residential, single family, medium density. Um, those in favor, Brannum?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonkey?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fryerson?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Sirc.
Aye.
I think the motion passes, eight, zero.
That'll be our recommendation to council and that the case will go up to county council next. Thank you. Next case is two, two, dash, zero, three, two. Uh, that one's still on? Yeah, that one's still on. Okay, zero, two, two, dash, zero, three, two, M A. Mr. Price, whenever you're ready.
Uh, again, the next item is case twenty-two dash zero, three, two, M A. The applicant is Irvin Capers. Um, the location is at two oh, three and two seventeen, Gate Hill Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone four point eight, six acres from heavy industrial, which is H I, to rural, which is R U. Um. Staff recommends disapproval of this request. Um, again, the, based on the objectives of the comprehensive plan, um, which the plan recommends limited development within these areas. Uh, but we want to point out that the proposed zoning would be consistent with the surrounding rural zoning districts and residential uses on the western side of Accords Ferry Road. Um, but again, staff recommends disapproval principally uh, because it is not in compliance with the recommendation of the comprehensive plan, which designates this area as conservation.
Thank you, and so the, this zoning was assigned with, uh, Richland County's original adoption of zoning in nineteen seventy-seven, right? And do you have a sense for why they landed on, uh, this heavy industrial?
Um, if Mr. Delay just zoom out, basically, I think you can look at the industrial uses that are in that area. Um, international paper, and then if you look, um, south of, well, about where the mouse is, those other uses are industrial.
Okay. So. Yes. Price.
Interesting, but, you know, as we talk about it from a staff standpoint, actually neither one of the zoning um, designations was currently there. The H I or was proposed would be in com, um, would be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, um, of this designation of conservation.
And ne- neither the current zoning designation or what's proposed would be compliant with. Okay. This area. Anything else for staff before we hear from the applicant? All right, Mr. Dennis.
All right, we have Irvin Capers.
Name and address, please. Your name and address, please.
Okay, good afternoon, how you doing? Irvin Capers. I live at two oh, three Gate Hill Road, East of South Carolina, two nine, zero, four, four. The, um, the property that's, that's being talked about, this property land was given to me back by my mother. Um, I was four when we moved down there, um, the land was not zoned as H I. It was just a rural area. So I own two oh, three, I own two hundred, which is across from me. I own two seventeen, which is to the left, left of me, and also the three point nine acres that's behind me. At the point where I'm at, I cannot do anything. I have four kids, four boys, ten grandkids. You know, one of my sons wants to put a home in front of me on the acre over there. We can't do that, can't do anything. I just retired for forty years out of military and I want to put a building back behind my home, like a thirty by forty building for me to be able to work out of, whatever. I can't do that. I looked at, I'm, I'm living in a mobile home, I wanted to upgrade to maybe a modular home, either, either build me a home. I'm at the point, I'm, I'm, I'm paying taxes every year with land, I can't do anything, I can't leave it to my kids. I want to be able to leave my boys something, but if I die, they got land it can do nothing with. I, I, I just don't understand why it was zoned as H I. I want to, I want to rezone it to R U, so I can at least maybe put me a building up back behind where I live to be able to work out of, right now, work outside, lay it on the ground, whatever, or and also I want to be able to leave my kids up there. I want to be able for my boys to say, I want to build a house in front of where my dad lives. Like I said, I own an acre in front of me, which is two hundred, it's not on your agenda because I didn't have a plat for it, but I had the deed for it. It's an acre, it's a cleared acre and we can do nothing, nothing. And I'm just asking for your considerable, um, approval to rezone it to R U, so at least I am allowed to do something. Like I said, I retired, I retired out of the military last year, my goals were to put my shop up, maybe move a more home to a modular home, or maybe build me a home.
Thank you, that's your time. Quick question for you, Mr. Capers, how long you been out there now?
I've been out there since I've been five years old.
Eight.
Yeah, so.
What year?
Yes, sir, and I'm sixty, I'm sixty now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sixty years. Got it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Capers?
Mr. Chairman, just a clarity question.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
There are three parcels listed on the agenda. I'm looking at where the cursor is shown, but Mr. Capers made reference to residing with, in immediate proximity. So I'm trying to understand the joining parcels that he's referring to.
Two oh, two oh, three is a joint to two, two thirteen, it may not be two thirteen on the map, but that's the three point nine acres. That's a joint to that, and then that part is a joint to two seventeen, which is the property below that. Two hundred, which you're not seeing, this is directly across the road from two oh, three. Two oh, one is my sister that stays next to me, but the, the three point nine acres comes behind my house, her house, and below the side of my house, back up to Gate Hill Road.
Thank you, anything else?
So then the actual use despite the zoning is residential?
Price.
Yes, so what you have here is just nonconforming residential use and, and Mr.
Capers.
Sorry, Mr. Capers is correct, um, he's a bit of a quandary. Um, because when you're nonconforming, you know, really not much you can do, you, you're allowed to remain. And so it, and as he spoke of the ability to, you know, add a barn or some other building to the property, that would not be allowed. Because that would be deemed to be an expansion of a, an extension of a nonconforming use. It would be the same thing if you wanted to add on to the home. That will probably be denied because, again, it would be deemed to be an expansion of a nonconforming use.
And I don't know.
I understand nonconforming use, I guess the, the question that I'm raising with this particular view shown here with the other houses is that typically you see a nonconforming use as a standalone, and when you look at the zoning map by itself, it looks like it was be a use request that's not consistent with what's happening. But when you look at the map that's shown that the loan, the nonconforming use expands beyond just those three parcels, but includes some of the surrounding parcels as well.
Yes, sir.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that the zoning map doesn't necessarily reflect what's actually in use.
Sure, yeah, sounds like there's been a house of some sort, somebody's been residing out there since well before nineteen seventy-seven.
Yes, sir, um, they, they were, because the property right in front of me, there was a house previously there, only on that one acre. And I asked, could I put something, they said, no, I couldn't because of the way it's real, but it was a house there, it was a residence there on that side of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Cap.
Okay.
Let's see, yeah, anybody else?
We have Bernie Scott.
This is the kind of stuff I'm talking about. Um, I knew his mother and father, hardworking, honest people, work hard, get a piece of land. And then they had kids, he's the baby of the litter. He served military and everything. His sister lived next door to him. And for zoning to say is nonconforming use, and he can't do anything, he got four grown boys. Please rezone this so that he can have something to pass on to his kids. Anytime, and we try to protect our military people, he's also a church member of ours. We got to look at this very careful because someone's zone came out and said, this is zone H I or whatever. It should not be, we should talk to the people, make sure it's, it's taking in what they have. We only have land. And for Mr. Capers to go to the military and come back now, want to do something and leave something for his kids, please rezone it. Thank you.
I'll sign up.
Oh, sir, that's it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh, Chris.
Question, um, and this may have already been covered, uh, so forgive me if, if that's the case, but, um, do we know what, in this, to the staff, do we know if the, um, as it currently stands, the proposed, um, zoning, um, in the uh, as the proposed, uh, rezoning as, as it currently stands?
Just informed that the proposed, um, zoning, um, would have been in for H I.
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions for staff.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sirc, um, Mr. Duran.
First, uh, staff, um, do you have any idea what this, what the zoning for this property was when it was first obtained, first purchased?
Now, what it looks like, um, is when we adopted our zoning, going back to nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and they applied the zoning that they just kind of put a blanket H I out in this area, um, just to really take a look into this, you know, each individual parcel. Which is, you know, we're going through that process now, it's just kind of hard sometimes to, to look at each individual parcel. And then there are times like this when the applicant comes in, or the property owner, and makes a request um, to rezone their property to make it compliant. And, uh, so that they can do something with it is when we alerted to, maybe that wasn't the appropriate zoning designation at that time, we're not sure.
Second question is, it's, it's on H I, heavy industrial. And looking at the, the map on page twenty-nine, it appears to be no heavy industrial activity anywhere around it, so is that correct?
You said, no, sir, there's no industrial, that's what I was saying, there's probably a blanket rezoning along that section of, um, I guess, property east of Accords Ferry, that goes down from, all the way from International Paper. And like I said, if Mr. Delay just zoom out, you'll see a number of other industrial uses that have been there for quite a while. And so just, they all just kind of fell in under the H I zoning designation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Um, the previous case, um, twenty-two dash oh, two, eight, M A, um, sixty-two, seventeen, two notch, from a legal perspective, there were adjacent uses that supported Mr. Yonkey's rationalization as to want suitable and right thing to do based on the joining uses. And I think here, we're struggling with the fact that the existing zoning and proposed zoning are not actually in conformity with what is prevailing in that area. So we have a standalone request, but it sounds as if there are some additional parcels that could also benefit from reconsideration in terms of what the amendment says, uh, map amendment references for those parcels. Um, but it does also seem to be a outcome in terms of looking at what's actually happening in terms of land use.
Yeah, we, we, go ahead, I'm sorry. I, I was just going to say, I think it was in reference to the last case where we just kind of called attention to the fact that staff's recommendations are based on one of those four factors that our county code says that we as the planning commission should consider when it comes to these map amendments, so they, they rely strictly on the comprehensive plan. And then we've got these three additional factors that we look at, the need and the justification, similar zoning in the immediate vicinity and the impact on the surrounding area. So, you know, certainly as, as we hear what we're, um, hearing today, uh, and realizing that some of these zonings, they, they do happen with what we would say painted with broad strokes. So they're not like always specific to specific parcels. And because, you know, this particular applicant comes here and calls attention to this specific parcel, it gives us that chance to look at all four of those factors and maybe, uh, you know, again, make a recommendation of whether something should change or not that, that was originally not looked at at a very specific level, now we have the chance to look at it at that level. Um, certainly for me, when I look at it, the request is R U, um, that definitely seems to be more in the direction of conservation, uh, which is what the comprehensive plan calls for. Um, and then the need and the justification, just kind of hearing about the fact that, uh, potentially the applicant has been out there sixty years. Um, predating the nineteen seventy-seven original zoning. Um, and it just kind of got caught in between these large facilities that are, you know, some distance away. Not in the, whatever, immediate, immediate vicinity. So it's definitely got my attention, you know, that potentially we need to look at these factors and, and make a recommendation. But it, you know, it takes all four of those factors into account, not just one specific thing.
Sure, and that's what I'm saying, so from the, the articulation you just gave in terms of surrounding use, when you look at what's actually the surrounding use, I'm saying that gives the justification at other look, and look at the impact, uh, because you're going to continue to reduce applicability of zoning as those existing nonconforming uses get picked off one at a time in terms of trying to do it. So you have a cluster that, um, is homogeneous, but it's in a zoning area that's not, that not.
Yeah, I would, I would look at the fact that it might like cure some nonconformances just as a, as a, as a consequence of, of whatever our choice would be if it were to rezone it. Um, but certainly I think about the same kinds of things in the history that's there, when I think about the need and the justification. That plus the fact that, um, the comp plan is saying it desires conservation in that area, R U would be a lot more in the direction of conservation than, uh, heavy industrial.
Chair. Mr. Duran.
Totally agree with what you just said, uh, and it just seems that this, this area was given an H I by default, so to speak, almost, and the, oh, the, uh, property owner here is, is suffering unfairly as a result of that, um, so it, it just seems like, it just doesn't seem right that we zone H I, but there is no H I anywhere around it. Um, it looks more like a rural zoning than, than anything else. I understand what the comprehensive plan may be going toward or, or what it's thinking about in the future, but uh, as of now, I would be in favor of, um, approving this, this, uh, application.
Mr. Chair, have a motion.
Fryerson.
Um, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, in that the comprehensive plan in theory may have good intentions with reference to this case, but based upon the evidence that we heard today from the actual landowner and from the Scott, I so move, the evidence indicates that in actuality, it impacts the people of that community adversely. Therefore, I move that we send case twenty dash zero, three, two, M A to county council with a recommendation of approval. Therefore, I move that we send case 20-032 MA to county council with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you. Just to confirm, that's case 22-032 MA?
Two eight.
All right. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we send this to council with a recommendation of approval on the grounds that Ms. Fireson stated. Mr. Price, would you please take a vote?
Okay, we have a motion for the approval of case 22-032 MA from heavy industrial to rule. Those in favor? Random?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonkey?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fireson?
Aye.
Metz?
Durant?
Aye.
Serks?
Aye.
All right, and motion passes?
All right, thank you. I believe that concludes our map amendment cases for today. That'll be our recommendation to county council. We're two and a half hours in to this meeting. So we was the commission interested in taking like five, 10, 10 minute break? Or keep going?
Keep going.
Keep going. Okay.
Staff? No, we can continue on.
All right.
It's your wish. The chair. I want to point out something and just based on the conversation or the discussion that I think the planning commission just had. And this may be something that the planning commission can start looking at as we can, you know, move on. So you run across a situation like you just did where you identify an area and you see in this particular case, a number of homes that you say, you know what, this really doesn't fit. But the properties with the applicant only gave me with three parcels, which you can clearly see that there are other parcels in the area that are very similar to what the subject parcels were. In those cases, do we just wait until the applicant or the adjacent property owners come in and ask for rezoning, you know, themselves to say, you know, we want to be rezoned rule also, just using that as the example? Or is it something that maybe we should look at? And maybe be a little more proactive with some of these when we clearly see certain areas just aren't in compliance either by zoning or even with the comprehensive plan and that we initiate the request?
Yeah, thank you, Price. I know I've commented on that here and there, just as we've done the LDC rewrite and the remapping that I I personally am in receptive to, you know, targeted potential proactive rezonings. That this area does seem like is a good example of of one of those potential. So I appreciate you bringing that up and it's something that I think we could definitely look at as a regular practice, if you will, when these areas come to our attention.
Right. Yes, Mr. Yonkey.
There's a follow up question. What would the procedure look like for us if we wanted to look at a particular area? Reach out to you before a meeting, add it to the agenda?
I think it's a, I think it would be a good idea that the way the direction we've been going that council reaches, I mean, the planning commission reaches out and then we make put as a motion on the agenda. And so we'll take it up at the next meeting and if and if it's agreed upon, then the following meeting, we will initiate that rezoning process.
All right. I mean, in this particular case, I mean, but for the procedural logistics of our role, my my thought is I'm sitting here listening to the presentation of that particular case. The most expedient thing would have been that if the applicant was not in a time situation to withdraw it without prejudice and then come back in a comprehensive way. Or which I think is part of your point is that because now instead of a standalone, you would have something of a more comprehensive nature that fits for that. And so that is in fact a path forward for those rare but realistic situations, then it provides a appropriately in terms of what used to happen within that corridor, that particular area.
Right. I I see exactly what you're saying, but I think the only thing we would have to really look at is that in order for when this got initiated, applicant paid a fee, completed the application and started the process, trying to figure on what grounds would we not hear the case? See what I'm saying? So I'm sorry. So I'm just trying to figure out how we would, in this case, we agree that the area should be maybe productively zoned by the county. But what do we do with his request, you know, because you don't want, you don't deny it. But then at the same time, if you approve, it's going to go forward, you know. Maybe that's something we should really look at.
Yeah, it'd be another way to go about it. I mean, we could always just encourage them to apply individually. But but I know it's within our authority to propose it ourselves. Yep. Okay. Item number eight. This is a proposed resolution to recommend that Richland County Council enact an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan by incorporating and adopting the Lower Richland Tourism Plan into that comprehensive plan. We heard a presentation from, I believe it was Conservation Commission last meeting and I just want to ask, we deferred any action. We talked about, I guess, potential options for, you know, what we might want to put in our record, our resolution. The resolution that we have was drafted by staff that was in our materials. And staff, is there anything that you guys want to present upfront before we continue the conversation today or?
Not from the planning staff. We can see if the we have representatives from the conservation department, but also we have from the Conservation Commission. Mr. Grego, he spoke previously at the last meeting. They may have some input to some additional suggestions.
Okay. Any any questions for this gentleman? All right.
Quentin Epps, Conservation Division. We don't have anything further to say, but we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Epps. Yes, again, I feel like I'm generally in favor of, you know, the content of what I reviewed in the plan. I'm just a little uncertain as to, you know, whether we would take this. I I would be in favor of taking this step to formally recommend that it be incorporated into the comprehensive plan. But I but I do want to hear from the commission on this.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Duran.
Staff, actually, if this is adopted into the comprehensive plan, does that mean going forward every zoning application that comes through, you're going to have to also look at how it affects the tourism plan?
Any parcel that comes forward that falls within the designated area of the tourism plan, that would be included as part of the package. When we're when we're establishing the designation that it falls within and and the requirements of those designations, so you will get the comprehensive plan as far as whether it's on rural or conservation, whatever those designations are and what those guidelines are. But we would also include those same guidelines for the tourism plan also, if it falls within those areas. And that's just a give for you and your evaluation on whether you want to approve or disapprove a request.
Okay. Mr. Yonkey. Give you a simplified question. Who kicked off this tourism plan? Was there something council requested?
Draps, thank you.
Quentin Epps, Conservation Division for the record. Planning Commission Chair and members. I am trying to remember exactly how it started. There was much conversation with the council members at the time about how we needed to promote existing resources that we already have down in the lower Richland area. And then a study came out from the National Park Service that, and I can't remember the exact figures, but so I don't know if you heard that or not, but it was 155,000 visitors per year and I've already forgotten 9.2 million dollars back then and since then it's increased. And and so there was a lot of discussion among commissioners about how we would enhance the natural, cultural and historic resources that we already have in in the area and and produce more value from that. And we started looking at gateway communities all around the countries which are thriving because they take advantage of these national park visitors and the income they have in the area. And so we were trying to figure out how we would do that as a county. And that's how the Lower Richland Tourism Plan came into effect. It was a frankly, the commissioners and a group of people that from the area and the council members who said, well, we need to bring together a study and figure out how other areas do this. And that's how we we came to the Lower Richland Tourism Plan. And then during the the production of the plan, if that's the right term, we had stakeholder meetings to determine if people in the area, what they would want and how they would want it done. And that's how the plan came together. That answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
When you reference commissioners, you're talking about conservation commissioners, is that right?
Yes, I apologize. The Richland County Conservation Commissioners.
Here.
Sir Dennis.
Yes, sir. How many of the community members down there, how much input did they have? I mean, did y'all have a lot of meetings with them?
I'm trying to remember the exact number of meetings. It may have been three meetings, but it was at a minimum two meetings we had down there that were highly publicized. And where we brought in the consultants and we had all these boards up and we asked a lot of questions and we got a lot of feedback. And we also took feedback online. I'd probably, I'd have to look back at the figures and get back to you if you really want a exact number, but I'd say that we had 500 to 1,000 people who provided feedback over the period of the when they were writing the Lower Richland Tourism Plan.
Was any of that feedback negative feedback or was it all positive or or was it a mix?
There was a very little negative feedback about the plan itself. There were a lot of folks who provided feedback that said they wanted a hospital in the area, which is, it's not really the focus of the Lower Richland Tourism Plan because that's not what we were going for. So those kinds of comments were they were tabulated, but they, you know, didn't really apply to us. There were a few comments that were from large land, adjacent landowners who said that they they weren't particularly happy about promoting more people coming down to the area. And then there were some, if I'm all from memory, people that were complaining about the bicycle riders that ride through Lower Richland and how sometimes they get big, big groups of bicycle riders down there and they block traffic. So those were the kind of negative comments that I remember. Very little in the way of negative comments or in particular, significant negative comments. Most people were in favor of it. And even frankly, some of the large landowners that I approached later who didn't want to bring people down into the area, they were grudging. They said, yeah, it's a good idea, but I don't really want anybody else to enjoy my my area. I like it just like it is.
Mr. Yonkey. Oh, question. I'll probably not ask it again, like any input from the military? I look at your map in the middle of the packet, McIntyre Base is in the center. And they fly helicopters, F-16s all over. It's just south of Port Jackson. What did our some military members say or give any comments?
I do not remember. I'm I'm going to have to look back at that to provide you with some comments later exact, but my thought is, is that the consultants did reach out to the Air Force Base in particular, and they were in favor of it as long as it promoted activities in the what I call the mushroom. You know, where they're likely to have all the crashes, if it if anybody crashed, you know, where they land and they take off. There's like a mushroom around the base. And otherwise, they didn't want any development in that area. They promote ag and conservation in those areas so that if they have crashes, they're not, they're impacting the least amount of people.
Mr. Chairman.
Watson.
I I was certainly here last month and heard the presentation. Appreciate your opening comments in terms of what I'm going to deem as support in terms of. And my question is that I think it needs to be adopted. It needs to be as an economic development. My question is, given that we make our decision based on a set list of criteria and evaluating our, the cases that come before us, has council for the county weighed in on whether or not the adoption as a part of the comprehensive plan is the right mechanism for the plan to be adopted? My question is not, should this be formally adopted by council? Is that, is the adoption as a part of plan the proper mechanism? And has council, not council, meaning county council, but has legal council weighed in or pined on that?
Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And oh, you made me stand up for sitting so long. Very simply, yes, we went back and forth as administration with the Chair of the council and with legal staff and so forth. And it was determined that the appropriate mechanism for this plan was adoption as part of the comprehensive plan. So this went to council approximately two to three months ago. Council reviewed it. They accepted the plan and they directed staff to send it to Planning Commission. So that was an actual motion from the council to bring it to to do this process. So yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I like a lot of what I saw in the tourism plan. I don't I don't remember us. I mean, Mr. Price, is there a precedent for, you know, a tourism plan being adopted into the comprehensive plan in Richland County?
Not that I know of, but I mean, adoption of this is very similar to what you did with the An Hills. On previous, I think Yowon Council, I guess Yowon Planning Commission on that time. Well, essentially by putting this within our comprehensive plan, it will allow you, you know, go back to Mr. What Mr. Yonkey's, one of his questions about, you know, the Air Force Base. Again, you still need the zoning a lot of times to to help initiate some of these uses. And so again, you will look at the comprehensive plan, you'll look at the the Lower Richland Plan and take all those things into consideration, of course, again, with the input a lot of times from the community, but also from the Air Force Base. So but going back to, we have done something similar and actually more recently, we kind of followed that model in which we we kind of followed that model in which we incorporated the Sand Hills Plan into the comprehensive plan, the master plan.
Okay. Can I get a thumbs up from the audio technician? Do we get the audio, Mr. Price? Catch Mr. Price's audio? Are you catching what he's saying?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thought I'd ask. Thanks. What else from the commission? I got a, I got a thought on a motion. I just, I could throw that out there just for conversation purposes.
Yeah, I'd like to hear your motion.
Well, so just, you know, I'm a little hesitant to appear to be endorsing like budget expenditures. I know there were some budgetary numbers set forth in the tourism plan. And, and also, you know, just reluctant to add another layer that might potentially restrict the zoning analysis. So I wanna, I wanna like put something out that's positive about the tourism plan. And it may just be too soft for the commission. But I was just thinking about moving to recommend that county councils support the stated objectives of the tourism plan in any way they deem appropriate. You know, we give it a thumbs up and then, and then it lands with council to determine what they feel like is appropriate. I second that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Price.
Turn this over to Mr. Epps again. The discussion about any type of financial obligation. The discussion about any financial obligation was discussed at council, on the council level. Mr. Epps, just talk about that a little bit more.
Sure.
Yes. In council, we had several meetings where we discussed the financial obligations that this plan, or in other words, this concept might present if it was approved. And the answer was always that it, they, it's already probably three or four years old. And it doesn't present, these are estimates of what it might cost if we were to do these things. But just like any other plan you might have, it doesn't mean that it's gonna be implemented exactly the way. And it's, and it certainly doesn't mean that that's what it's gonna cost. As we've all seen in the last few years, costs change very rapidly. But they cost and the estimates of those costs do not obligate the commission or the county or anybody else that these projects have to be done. And they have to be done exactly like this. As we go forward in the future, what we're looking for is the county council and the planning commission to approve these items so that we can go out and look for grants and look for funding mechanisms, look for donations, look for things so that we can fund these things, not that we ever have to do them. And I've, I've been with the county not quite as long as Geo, but long enough to know that many plans are made that are never come to pass because of one reason or another. And in most cases, it's because you can't find the funding. So if we do not find the funding to do these things, they will not come to pass. And there is no obligation that's presented to the council or, or by the commission through accepting this plan.
Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
I think that your motion is presented as an endorsement of the plan. Still allows staff to use it as a funding mechanism that has been reviewed by this body and endorsed and accepted by the body. It just is not adding the legal teeth to add it as a part of the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Anything else for Mr. Epps?
I'd like to ask if Mr. Jensen could come up.
Mr. Jensen, come on up.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, you know, there are two different regulatory documents, planning documents that are just in general. You have comprehensive plans, which are advisory in nature. And then you have zoning codes, which are regulatory in nature. And so there are other things, other than comprehensive plans. There are other plans that the county and local jurisdictions adopt, such as the annual strategic plan that the council adopts every year. They're not regulatory in nature. They're purely advisory. And so the reason why the legal staff, the county attorney's office, the administrative staff recommended this process was because it's not a regulatory process in the sense that it is mandatory. It is purely advisory. And so any numbers, any policies, anything you see in here, again, are advisory. Every year, the council would have to approve a budget, which they do. And in their budget, they would have to take into consideration whatever expenditures are recommended in this document. And then they would approve them in the budget, at which time they would become effectively regulatory type things, because they would be approved as part of the annual budget. So that is the reason why this process was recommended, because it, this is an advisory document. The comprehensive plan is an advisory document. And any expenditure, anything that enacts this plan would have to be approved annually by council through their budget process.
I mean, I appreciate the information. I don't, I don't know. Nothing, nothing in my motion is, you know, adverse to, to what's in the tourism plan. I just, you know.
The reason I bring that up is because council specifically tasked us as staff to take it before you to add to the comprehensive plan. So if your direction is to add it to the comprehensive plan, then you should say, add it to the comprehensive plan. If your direction is, don't add it to the comprehensive plan, then your motion should say, don't add it to the comprehensive plan. In other words, giving us a motion that doesn't do one or the other doesn't affect what council has tasked you with, or tasked us with. So that, so my only request is, if you think it should be part of the plan, then say that. And if you think it shouldn't be part of the plan, then say that. And either way, we can then take the action to council, or we can take the item to council for action.
Oh, yeah, I think that speaks a little bit to the dynamics between the planning commission and county council. I mean, we, we have our authority that's by statute. And I mean, we, you know, there are, there are motions that council members make that, you know, we're asked to consider because they're within a certain purview. I mean, it's just, you know, there, you're saying council directed the planning commission to make a recommendation about whether or not to add the tourism plan to the comprehensive plan?
That, that's, that's the direction is to, would, do you recommend, as a body, does the commission recommend this as part of the comprehensive plan or not? That is, that is what council has put before you.
I'd like to have information along those lines. You know, it just shows up on our agenda as a resolution to recommend. You know, dot, dot, dot. So.
I understand.
Yeah.
And so if you need to continue this with the new information I've given you, that's fantastic. I just want to make sure that you understand that is what has been, that is what the application is. The application, for lack of a better term, is to add this to part of the comprehensive plan.
Okay. New.
Chair. Mr. Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question for staff. Ms. Jensen, would you guys say that this plan contradicts the comprehensive plan at all? Or is it just another layer?
It is, Mr. Chair, may I address?
Yes, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you. Yes, it is another layer. So in, in South Carolina, in our state code, there are certain elements you have to have in a comprehensive plan. You have to have a land use element. You have to have, I think it's a transportation element. You have, and I cannot remember all of here. I could tell you in other states, I can tell you better. But I know here, and so this is the equivalent of another element. An economic development plan is a typical element in a comprehensive plan in many jurisdictions in many states. There are all different kinds of elements. So a tourism or heritage or conservation element is very, very common in a comprehensive plan.
Johnson.
Just one, I'm not trying to split hairs, but just to make sure I'm, I'm hearing what, I'm pitching what you're catching.
Yes, sir.
Was council's vote for the planning commission to follow the process so that we would vote and bring it as a part of the comprehensive plans for them to approve? Or was council ask us to consider it?
The request, thank you, Mr. Chair, may I address?
Yes, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, yes. So the request is to have the planning commission weigh in on whether or not it should be part of the comprehensive plan so that they can then take a final action on it. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. Dennis.
Just a reminder, we have a motion that's made second on the floor.
We have a motion and it's seconded.
To call the question on the motion on the floor. Yeah. Editorial comment, I mean, I do think that your motion does what. Chair, could you restate your motion?
Yes, it's to recommend that council support the stated objectives of the Lower Richland Tourism Plan in any way they deem appropriate.
Friendly amendment?
Yes, go ahead.
Including adoption as a part of a comprehensive plan.
I have no objection to that friendly amendment.
We had a motion, a second, and now we're amending the motion, correct?
Yes.
All right, I withdraw my second on the amended motion.
Okay. Second to the amended motion.
I second.
Motion and second anymore, debate or discussion? We'll go ahead and take the vote.
Yeah. Question?
Yes, Mr. Drant.
Initial motion was to offer somewhat of a softer version for the council to look at.
Right.
And what Mr. Johnson added strengthens it a little bit.
Right.
I don't think enough, but.
You don't think enough, is that what you said?
I think as Mr. Administrator said, the council has asked us, should they do it or should they not do it? And they're not looking for options.
Yeah, and I, I just don't, I don't have that background, other than just hearing it now from the podium. So, you know, normally there's a written motion. For example, what was said under 9A council motions? You know, an articulated motion with a source on it. And, you know, I don't, I don't have that background information. What I have is just a draft resolution, you know, in the packet, so. We defer it, but we do have a motion and a second on this amended motion. Any other debate on this motion? All right. So the motion is to recommend county council support the stated objectives of the Lower Richland Tourism Plan in any way they deem appropriate, including adoption as a part of the comprehensive plan. Mr. Price, would you take the vote on that?
Are those in favor of the motion? Branham?
Aye.
Dennis?
No.
Yaki?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Byerson?
Aye.
Fitz?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Serks?
No.
Motion passes six to.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, Mr. Dennis, is that you?
Yes, I just wanted to make a brief statement on why I voted no.
Sure.
The reason why I voted no, I did not want to add this to the comprehensive plan because I feel that it's not needed at this time. I do support it. I like it. But with the upcoming comprehensive plan, I think there would have been a better way to go forward with it. And looking at that more in depth, I just, I just don't see, like, it's more of a county council thing, not, not for us. Because I mean, it can either go yes or no from us, and they can do whatever they want to with it. It, it just, it didn't go against the comprehensive plan. It didn't go with the comprehensive plan. So I mean, I think that's why, and that's why I voted no, because I really think county council should make that final determination. I just didn't support telling them to make it.
Okay. Excellent. And then, Mr. Price, Mr. Jensen, if you guys have any additional information or direction from county council, once you provide them the report of our actions today, please let us know.
Ms. Chairman, I.
Johnson.
I just wanted to vice, I know, understand that that's why we approached it that way, because it wasn't us saying yes, it was US county council, make your decision. Okay.
All right, thank you. That is item eight. Mr. Price, was there anything else from you?
Just for clarity, on the motion. So are you sending the resolution or?
We probably would want to reword the resolution to try to follow pretty closely what my motion was. Definitely not approving the resolution as it was written in our packet.
Okay, so do you want us to go ahead and reword the resolution, then send it out to you for your review or?
Ms. Chairman, can you reread your resolution, please?
Yes, the request is to reread it. The, the motion was to recommend county council support the stated objectives of the Lower Richland Tourism Plan in any way they deem appropriate, including adoption as a part of the comprehensive plan. And I'll be happy to circulate the draft amongst the commission once you've drafted that. Mr. Price? Right. Anything else on item eight?
I have one statement editorially.
Okay.
I heard the discussion, and I think the problem is, like you said, we're not trying to tell them what to do. I think we added too much verbiage when we included that part about including blah, 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 blah. The part right before that, if we'd stopped right there, then I don't think the ambiguity would have come. And I don't think that we'd be quote, telling them what to do. If you just read it again and stop and just, just hear it, if you, if you would, just please.
Sure. To recommend county council support the stated objectives of the Lower Richland Tourism Plan in any way they deem appropriate.
I mean, as in any way they deem appropriate covers that. We wouldn't have to say, including blah, 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 blah. Just editorially.
Sure.
Mr. Dennis.
Yeah, I totally agree. That's why, when he read it the first time, that's why I seconded it the first time. But then when we added it, that's why I didn't second. I, I agree that I think the first one was the better one.
Okay. Anything else on item eight? And thank you to the Conservation Commission for your hard work on the plan. I was really excited to look at it, like I mentioned, last month. Grew up in that area, still have a lot of family out that way. Really excited about the idea of that the gateway to the Congree Park becoming a more successful area and bringing the attention that I believe that, you know, our natural assets deserve and, and the history of that area as well. So thank you for your work there. Forward to seeing what county council does with it. And we had item 9A, that was tabled. And so we moved to item 9B. These are recommended amendments to the 2021 Land Development Code. And we, none of these are new, as I recall. So we had two motions by Mr. Dennis and then a third from me. And the county was gonna offer some potential fine tuning of terminology as to my motion. And then, as I recall, Mr. Dennis was gonna propose some potential special requirements as to his motions. Dennis, do you want to talk about yours there, that first one as to animal shelter?
Yeah, the special requirements were already in there for the, for it. It was just, when. It was just, when I looked at RT, I, I, I really wanted to do something a little bit different, um, with that. Uh, but I was down and out for a little bit, so I didn't get to dig into it as much, but your motions really didn't affect it like I thought it was for size. I got, I did not print that out, I printed something else out and forgot to print that coming here. So I would need to pull up the special requirement, so while we're talking, I can pull them up. Anybody's got, just gotta pull them up.
Say, my motions, were you talking about just the modifications to the density for AG, HM?
Yes, the, the densities. So there was special requirements already for the, um, animal shelter and veterinary services, and I just think they should just roll over to that RT area. Basically taking the exact same thing out of there and putting it in there, because I mean, as far as land size, I didn't see anything in there. You know, it, there's already the services in there. When, I had some other things, but when I read through it, I just figured that what's in there is already good enough and actually a lot better than what I came up with, um. So I just kinda wanted to keep those as the special requirements.
I'm not really following, where, where are the special requirements that you think are appropriate right now?
So, uh, what they got in front of us.
Okay.
Where he just highlighted, those are the special requirements that would have to go in there for it. And I think there's one on the page below it, too.
What, uh, what area is this found right now? Uh, Tommy, Mr. Delage?
All right, currently it is by special requirements in the, sorry, it's all the way at the bottom of this, uh, that's a follow it up, at the GC District. The INS, or, I'm sorry, the LI District. The CC four, and then it's part of, uh, Plan Development District. And just to note, it is permitted outright in the INS District.
Go back to, to the list. That's not it, is it? You're looking at group living right now?
And I apologize, I had to look at the wrong chart. It's special requirement INS and then permitted outright in EMP.
My reasoning for putting it out there, I know in a lot of other areas around the country, you find the animal shelters more into, in a rural area versus more industrial areas, getting them out away from the city and things like that. I personally liked it. I've had some people ask about it, why don't we have it more out in rural areas than we do up in the city? So I, I started looking at it, looked at, uh, Richmond County, North Carolina. Uh, I wanna say it was Tallahassee, Florida, or Leon County, um, and that's kinda how they had it, they had those out in those areas. So I thought it'd be a good way to incorporate for us to, um, out in some of these rural areas, allow this type of use. Because I mean, you might have somebody that has that land that wants to do that, but they can't. I mean, if, if you got a hundred acres or thirty five, or even ten acres, um, or three acres, just however, wherever you're at, if you're in the middle of nowhere, um, and I hate to say that in the middle of nowhere, but when you look at a lot of these areas, and we got some RT districts that are just out in the middle of the R, or where RU is, I mean, it, it can support it. I just thought it was a good idea for the future, um, because I mean, as the city, we're growing out, and I really don't think, uh, it's conducive to have a lot of these animals in the city. I think it's better off in a more rural set. I know it seems like a stretch, but that was my thinking. I, I really think, uh, you have a lot of people with big hearts that could utilize their land and help. Because I actually know quite a few people that have, you know, started rescues and things like that, and they're towards the city and they got that area, but I mean, if you got somebody out in the rural area, they could do this. They could absolutely do this. And this is just a suggestion. It's not like I'm fighting tooth and nail to get it. I just threw it out there, trying to make some things for the future a little bit better.
Where you're coming from there, Mr. Dennis? Um, I wanted to ask, does staff have any opinion about this?
Um, yes. Um, I guess my, one of my, I guess one of the concerns that we looked at, at least I looked at, excuse me, um, essentially what we did was we took all of our rural zoning designations that were three acres or less, and they became RT. I'm correct?
Three acres or less, yes.
One of the things, you know, even going back to when, when we were looking at the whole new land development code rewrite, was looking truly at rural areas and like, what is really rural? So I guess one of the things I'm looking at here is, do we, how do we look at RT now? Is it a true rural zoning designation? Or is it more of what we, those are rural residential, you know, more residential, it's just that you have larger lots. Um, with that being said, if you look at the special requirements that we're looking at, it says building, housing, animals should be located a minimum of a hundred and fifty feet from residential districts. So it seemed like the intent of these is that you want these away from where residential use is occurring. More out on the, if you're, you know, right now, I think we have them on the commercial designations primarily. But if you're going to have them in a, what was one of our rules, zoning designation, to seem like you would want these in a, maybe an AG or worse, an HM, um, which typically aren't gonna have that residential component, you know, all around it.
I, I see, I see where you're coming from with the, about the RT. The only reason why I was incorporating RT is because I know a lot of the areas, because they're under that HM, will be RT out and, out away from residential areas. And that's kinda why I was looking at it that way, too. Um, but I do understand how you're looking at it.
So if we, if we only did it in AG and HM, we would then at least be securing the fact that these lots would be at least three acres.
Right.
Did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Fireson.
With reference to the animal, animal shelters and the animal services, that phrase permitted by right, what does that actually mean?
Jeff, like to address that. You wanna get in this?
Question, I apologize.
That's okay. Uh, um, you know, under the section still dealing with the animal shelters and the animal services, item, uh, one and two under letter I, um, the phrase permitted by right is used both places. What does that actually mean?
Since permitted by right, that means there are no special requirements that go along with it, that they're just, they're allowed Jesus.
What, what? I couldn't do the last part.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay, um, I'm finding, can you see that section that she was referring to?
It's on, um, what page is that? I don't, each, but the same page where it has deferred at the top.
Yes.
Under item, Roman number nine, let them be. In letter I, then one and two, and, and the phrase permitted by right under animal shelter and animal services. I was just wondering what does that permitted by right really mean?
Which means it can be a, that use is an, is an allowed use in that zoning designation. If I had any additional requirements that go along with it, so there wouldn't be any additional special requirements, um, for the establishment of that use. Very similar.
That's a legal term.
Yes, very similar to, if, if you tell your property is on RSLD, a single family detached unit is a permitted use by right. Which means it can go there, no additional requirements that would need to be in place.
Thank you.
We are, we are potentially talking about special requirements in this motion, so is that wording correct or appropriate? Or would you recommend different phrasing?
I think the wording is correct, but I think my only question, and just, just thought, is with the inclusion of the RT zoning designation, that's the only thing that concerns me. But if the RT was not there, then I think the, the, those special requirements would be appropriate for the HM and the AG, because it would ensure at least some type of setback or separation between a residential zoning designation or a residential use.
If, if we could, can we go back again to the list of, uh, special requirements?
And one, and one thing we can point out, and we'll be more than happy to pull up the remapping that we did, I think when we went to the equivalency table, that I think one of the things that may help alleviate any of the concerns that Mr. Dennis had is that you do have a lot of RT that is amongst the AG zoning designation and also the HM. So they're kind of in the same area, so it's not as if you would have, you know, one section of an, of, um, of an area that's on RT and then miles away would be AG or HM. I think that they would support each other, but yet at the same time still give some type of protections, um, for the RT zoning designation.
At D, at fenced outdoor runs, um, from six AM to ten PM, reporting. Doesn't make me think, probably should have some space, and, and there's no restrictions on the, you know, number of animals or anything like that, right, in the zoning? And Mr. Dennis, I, I totally understand what you're, you're getting at, as far as, you know, there seems like there would potentially be some need for sheltering animals in, in rural areas where some agricultural activity related to animals is taking place. Farm animals or, I don't know, other domesticated animals, I guess.
My idea was, you know, that whole rural concept out there is just, you know, how that RT sprinkled in areas, you know, I just, that's why I threw the RT in there, because I figured there was some areas out there, um, and because of the land. But, you know, I'd be willing to change that motion and just, and drop the RT and just go with AG and HM.
We get some preliminary feedback from the commission on that?
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. Drant. Mr. Yonki stepped away briefly, but Mr. Dennis, uh, upon some feedback from Mr. Price, was offering that potentially, um, he could amend his motion to eliminate, to remove the RT zoning district from the motion, such that the animal shelter would be permitted with special requirements in the AG and HM. Uh, okay, and anyone else wanna comment on that, or we can go ahead and just, um, have Mr. Dennis make his motion and go from there?
Hold on, just one moment.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Find this too correctly, RT is that three acres or less? Okay, what's the acreage for, um, AG?
AG is thirty five acres or more.
Okay, and what about HM?
HM's from three to thirty five acres.
And then we've got a problem, three, two, thirty five, with the wording then, because you all explained to me what permitted by right is, and then that's, that's the one that Gio said, Mr. Price said, no additional requirements. Then we skip right over and then say, subject to special requirements. So we've got the wording messed up. We've got a, I shouldn't say messed up, we've got to, um, edit that wording, I would think.
Yeah, so I was asking Mr. Price about earlier, was that wording correct, or did we need to change it?
Chair.
But, well, Mr. Dennis, all right.
Yeah, uh, permitted by right was subject to special requirements, the wording I got. If you actually look at the table, that is a designation of an SR. So it would, it would go down as SR, not a P.
Is that why you said earlier, Mr. Price, that we didn't need to change the phrasing?
So we're getting more clarification now, right? So the, uh, by including this type of use in the HM and AG district, we just do it by special requirements versus as a P, which is will be what Mr. Fireson was mentioning is a permitting is outright.
Right, so, so is the proper wording permitted?
By special requirements.
Okay.
So it's not permitted by right, subject to special requirements? Because, I mean, that's how it's in our code, for all, for anything SR or SE. If it was, uh, exemptions, it would be permitted, subject to approval of special exemption permit. I'm just going by our new code.
All right, so looking here at our code, and Tommy, we'll go back to the special requirements that we were just. All right, so, again, if you're looking at it, if we were to introduce it into the AG and the HM zoning designations, it would be by SR. When you're looking at this, SR, but those special requirements, as you go to the end, it tells you which section of special requirements could be found. So we just be special requirements.
Permitted is by special requirements, is that what you said earlier?
Yes, permitted by special requirements, and that's what the SR stands for.
So it's not.
Subject to special requirements.
But then our table on twenty six dash four point two B is wrong for our verbiage. Up at the top, the SR says permitted by right, subject to special requirements.
Right, so it's allowed, sub, provided you can meet these requirements. So that's, it would be correct.
But my motion is correct.
Your motion would be, yes, include this under this section, under S, it would be an SR.
Okay.
I think we're all learning this code, so.
Yeah, I mean, i- if it was under two thousand and five, I think it was been different verbiage, but because it's under the new, that's why I went with that permitted by right, subject to special requirements, which would designate it an SR on the table.
So did, sir, uh, Dennis, did you motion? Thank you.
Can't remember either. Um, so here, let me, uh, make the motion. I'm gonna amend the motion as to animal shelter. I move to recommend the addition of animal shelters permitted by right, subject to special requirements in the AG, HM zoning districts.
Okay. Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further debate or discussion on this motion? All right, so, uh, motion is to, uh, add it to the ledger, recommendation the addition of animal shelters permitted, permitted by right, subject to special requirements in the AG and HM zoning districts, those being the same, uh, special requirements set out. I guess we got, uh, here on page four dash one seven, um, of the November twenty twenty one version of the Land Development Code. All right, um, staff, would you please take the vote?
All right, those in favor of the emotion, of the motion, excuse me? Um, Brannum?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fireson?
Aye.
Fitz? Durant?
Aye.
Serks?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Fireson, what was your?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. So we're on to, uh, nine B I two. And this is Mr. Dennis's motion as to animal services veterinary hospital or clinic. Yes, Mr. Dennis?
Yes, after the discussion on the last one, um, I think I would like to change that motion.
Okay.
I would, I would like to, uh, change that motion and make the motion with discussion as to animal services veterinary hospital or clinic. I move to recommend the addition of veterinary hospital or clinic permitted by right, subject to special requirements in the AG, HM zoning districts. And those special requirements are already listed in our new code.
All those, uh.
Tommy, it's on page four dash twenty-seven.
Thank you, sir.
Number three, it'd be veterinary hospital or clinic. Are there?
Outside activities shall be limited to six hours per day or fewer?
Uh, hospital or clinics not meant to house animals long-term, which is why one of the requirements is facilities should not include provisions for kennels or boarding of animals not undergoing treatment.
But I mean, that could happen at any time of the day during a twenty-four hour day?
It, it possibly could.
So. Just like any use, I think someone could abuse it. But if you look at most, um, veterinary hospitals and clinics, they work with, you know, they're up, they're open a certain time and they close at a certain time. Um, so I think that, that you can, the concern about outside activity will probably be limited to those times when they're actually, you know, fully staffed if, if they're opened in some way, um, during the daytime. There's no guarantee, but.
There's no guarantee because I mean.
Always, it is always somebody that may.
Right off Trenton Road, we have a twenty-four hour area for pets.
Yes.
Which I've utilized myself two or three times. Um, and thank God we got them. But I mean, if you've got people living out towards the Saluda area, they don't have these areas that they can get to real quick. So allowing that to be out there, that's why I went with the veterinarian clinic, hospital and clinic. Uh, you know, at first the RT made sense, um, the way it was until we had those motions that changed the size. And then I think taking out that RT and going AG, HM made it right. Because I mean, you've got to keep in mind it's limited to six hours per day. That means you can't have, you know, animals out there all the time. But if you've got to take it out to use the restroom or you need it outside for something, um, you can take it out there. Most of those animals that are in a veterinary hospital or clinic are not outside all the time because they're either, you know, got IVs in them or being monitored for seizures or there's a whole list of stuff. I didn't realize it was that in-depth with specialized care in animal hos- hospitals and clinics.
Are they, uh, permitted or permitted with special requirements under the twenty twenty-one adopted LDC? Is it the same as the animal shelters?
It was. Allowed under the, um, RC MU one, MU three, MU two. And the GC zoning designations along with the institutional and the light industrial. Those are the main ones, not including the, um, Crane Creek zoning designations. But, um, the ones that we're looking at, it would be allowed in those, the ones I just read out.
What's the MU? Does that mean stand for?
Chiefs.
Yeah.
Idea of this is to allow those people with animals not to have to load up a horse and bring it all the way into the Spring Valley Animal Hospital, right off two notch next to, um, the Dollar Tree in the middle of Columbia. That's sorry for having you go back to the special requirement, four dash twenty-seven, Tom. I'm showing page.
I think it's tough when I started looking at side yard of ten feet, uh, between lots containing residential use. That just sounds like. And I understand effective of them try to provide some opportunities for services in rural areas.
And I think, you know, even that, I know that ten feet is kind of hard to stomach, but I think getting rid of the RT and allowing it to be in the HM, AG. Cause there's so much land there. I mean, they're not going to put it right next. I mean, they could, but then again.
It'd be a hassle, but kind of seems like it'd be nice to just increase those setbacks or whatever you want to call it, the side yards.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Delage.
I was gonna, thank you. I was gonna mention that, um, in cases where there's a conflicting provision under the special requirement. So, and, and again, this is more geared towards your commercial where you have smaller setbacks, the more restrictive would apply. So for instance, it's in the AG and HM districts, um, as it's currently being kind of, uh, recommended, those setbacks would apply to the principal structure. Um, so it'd actually be greater than the ten feet.
But what are they?
So those are, let me go. The districts. So in the AG district, it'd be twenty feet. And then in the Homestead District, looking at twenty feet as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Price.
Okay. Um, and I see, I see a kind of see if an issue with this, um, some way. All right. So in, um, this is a little off base, but I think you'll see where I'm going with this. So years ago, uh, we had an applicant that came in, um, the Gerson County wanted to do a daycare. And they result, and they wanted to rezone their property to general commercial council. Well, we liked the idea, we just don't like the location for general commercial. So we amended our ordinance to allow daycare centers in the rural zoning destinations. Kind of made sense. Um, you know, think about it, you put them out there, people have places to drop off their kids. Um, one of the issues that we ran into over the last few years was like that. Um, I say that because currently under, um, under, uh, the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one land development code, the, all of the veterinary clinics are allowed in commercial zoning designation. So in some way that does, um, move them away from residential areas. You know, they may be adjacent to them or budding, but typically they are going to be on main roads. Um, we have not put in, I think we have to take into consideration if we're going to move these to an AG or HM, that maybe we should have maybe another section for veterinary clinics, for the HM and AG districts, and have certain additional require, special requirements. And maybe things such as, um, they have to be on a certain type of road. Maybe they have to have an additional setback, um, more like the, um, animal shelters that we were looking at from a residential use. So I think there may be a little bit more to this that we should look at, um, rather than just trying to allow it in the same zoning designation that we have for our commercial uses.
About that, Mr. Dennis?
Uh, when I really think about it, I, I kind of understand where you're going with it. But at the same time, I mean, putting it in an HM or AG area, it puts it out there and, and there's a lot of requirements to be, to be a veterinary hospital or clinic. Um, I just, I think it belongs, I, I truly think it belongs out there more than a commercial setting. Um.
So I think the suggestion was just, yeah, just add, add some more sort of protections, I guess, from surrounding property owners, uh, maybe buffers or just like he referenced, um.
Why was if you got a commercial, if you're, if it's in a commercial area and that commercial area butts right up to a residential area, you're already, I mean, you're looking at forty feet. It's not just twenty, because you've got twenty on one side, twenty on the other side of that lot line. So you're looking at forty feet already.
Yeah. I think Mr. Smith, um, just pointed out that the veterinary clinics are allowed in the rural commercials only designations. Um, so in some ways it, it is intended to serve those areas. We just have to have more rural commercial.
I think that was part of the, I don't know if this is directly related, but it's part of the reason why I felt somewhat motivated to try to work on this, breaking down of the legacy rural zoning district so that it wasn't just so, you know, one size fits all, so that we could potentially create some opportunities for. Service areas. While at the same time potentially keeping them in an ideal zoning map situation, keeping them away from, you know, large populations, maybe or things like that where the disturbances could be increased. Uh, we're not there yet, but, um, again, just the fact that potentially you don't put it in RT, you put it in HM and maybe AG, that creates in theory a little bit more separation, um, likelihood that they would be located in, uh, truly rural areas.
And also taking into consideration that, you know, looking at the WISI table, uh, the, the map that we have, that you could have some RT right next to AG or surrounding that AG or HM, you know, which, you know, could be a problem for those people to live out there that are primarily zone RT. Then it's large trek of land is on AG or HM. And all of a sudden there's a, you know, veterinary clinic there, um, that they may be opposed to.
Yeah, but the way I look at it, I mean, you've got somebody, if they're out in an RT and they move out into that area with HG or, you know, you might not want people out there at three AM plowing fields, but if you've got thirty-five acres, it's got to get done. I mean, there's this, uh, that's the thing, you've got to push and give when you live out in the rural area.
Well, remember, one of the things that we're doing is we're taking our rural zoning designation, our true rule, our current rule, which is only three quarters of an acre and we're going to make those RT. So you may have a lot of, you know, areas that are zoned, that would now be zoned RT, but really from a, um, they'll be probably non-conforming, I believe, just from a lot size. Um, and probably primarily residentially developed in those areas. It just happened to now be RT because it will formerly RU, but it may be adjacent or near or one large trek of land just hasn't been developed, you know, potentially could be, um, you know, a clinic. And in some cases, even an animal shelter.
Anybody else on the commission want to, you know, add some to the discussion?
It's, yeah.
Durant?
Just to ask a simple question is the, the intent of Mr. Dennis's motion is simply to add, uh, AG and HM to the zoning areas that zoning districts that will be able to have animal services veterinary, in a nutshell?
Yes. Um, I already made a motion, there's one or two things I haven't, either somebody seconded it or they don't. I mean, somebody could second it and get voted down or, I mean.
The motion's here, so we have a second.
I'll second.
All right, seconded. Okay, uh, Mr. Price, please take the vote.
You please repeat that motion, it's been a while.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, as to animal, I make a motion as to animal service veterinary hospital or clinic. I move to recommend the addition of veterinary hospital or clinic permitted by right, subject to special requirements in the AG, HM zoning districts.
All right. Those in favor of that motion? Brannum?
No.
Dennis?
Yes.
Yonkey? Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Who's that? Ferguson?
Yes.
Bets? Durant?
Yes.
Turks?
Aye.
Eight zero, eight to one, six, seven to one, excuse me, seven to one.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Smith just pointed out something else, um, that veterinary livestock, veterinary services for livestock is already a permitted use in the, which is AG, in the HM zoning designations.
So it's already permitted for livestock, it's just an issue of whether other animals could be hospitalized or serviced.
Going along, but maybe Mr. Dennis's intent, I think he can speak on it.
I can speak on it. I mean, you're, you're looking at, you can already, somebody can already have a horse out there. They can already do that, but they can't see other animals. That makes zero sense.
Okay, got it. Okay. Well, it passes seven to one. All right, uh, let's see, item nine B I three, uh, which is my motion to delete subsection twenty-six dash three point one F four, which provides for zero lot line development and any other provisions, uh, for zero lot line development of single family dwellings. Uh, so again, that's a motion to delete those sections. Um, Mr. Jensen, I know we spoke some last time. Uh, do you have anything to share with us today on that topic?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one thing that I think, um, you should be aware of again, single family dwelling means any unit that has one family living in it. So if you say single family dwelling, then that means townhouses can't have zero lot lines and all those. So I think what you're saying is detached structure should, no zero lot lines for detached.
Okay. So that, we talked about amending the motion to include that word detached.
Structures.
Single family dwellings, is that?
That is correct, sir.
Still good?
Yeah.
All right. So, cause one of the things that we didn't want to do is, Mr. Jensen indicated was, uh, disrupt the ability, uh, uh, disrupt the ability uh, to to build zero lot line structures uh, in under, in base zoning districts that already permitted them. Um, this provision that I moved to delete was uh, a provision that was kind of a uh, catchall that was an exception to all the other base districts and saying that you could do it in any uh, district, as I recall, uh, so long as adjoining property owners agreed to do it. And uh, it's kind of raised the reality that many developments these days are uh, subdivided by a single property owner. And as such, they could really uh, change the character of a development by using that provision in an area that otherwise would not permit uh, zero lot line development. So uh, that's the motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion before we take the vote? So again, it's a motion to delete subsection twenty six dash three dot one F four, which provides for zero lot line development and any other provisions for zero lot line development of detached, single family dwellings. Right?
Mr. Chairman, okay, so I go back to my question statement at the beginning of the meeting. Then what action did we take last month? Because my act on it. Additional information?
We did take action on the cluster development, that was a different motion. And then this motion is specific to the zero lot line provisions. And on this one, we uh, deferred the vote uh, so that uh, Mr. Jensen could address uh, and review any concerns uh, unintentional uh, prohibitions of uh, attached developments in uh, base districts that permitted it. So with with his report today, his recommendation was to include the word detached, single family dwellings. Um, so I have added that to my motion and that's, that's where we are. All right, so we got a, th- this is my motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded, any other discussion before we take the vote?
Here, I just have one question.
Mr. Dennis?
Where, what are we amending on that motion? Where at?
I just, uh, I'm adding the word detached in front of the the last three words where it says single family dwellings, adding the word detached.
Want to make sure I had it right?
Hopefully, my explanation makes sense again, this is just, this is not meant to disturb the base districts that already permit uh, you know, townhomes and things like that. All right, a- anything else from staff? If not, if the staff would please take the vote.
All right, those in favor of the motion? Um, Random?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Frierson?
Aye.
Mets? Durant?
Aye.
Serks?
Aye.
Passes? No one.
Okay, that's all of the uh, motions for text amendment recommendations that were on the agenda. Are there any others that the commission wants to bring forward?
Uh, we had added uh, discussion for twenty six dash five point one three.
Thank you. That that was you, Mr. Dennis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does you want to go? Topic?
Yes, so in uh, section twenty six dash five point one three, it talks about uh, credits. Um, and you're looking at building houses and you can get credit, so and it it's labeled green initiatives, however, it's is given initiatives to something that's already done today. So if you take, for example, for residential structures, um, if you add, got to find it here, if you use a central air conditioning that's Energy Star qualified and you use a tankless water heater together, guess what, you can add a s- another story to your house. So if your roof limit and some of these areas, I I want to say it's like forty four feet, guess what, that no longer applies, now you have a third story because it has that incentive in there. Or, you know, for example, um, for residential R two, R three, R four, R five, R six, M MU one, MU two, MU three and GC, an increase in the maximum allowable residential density by twenty five percent for residential structures in the AG, HM, RT and R one, and then get a thirty percent increase also. So you start looking through, doing the math, I mean, we're just, basically, we're allowing a developer to come in, do what's pretty much standard in the industry today, and they don't get these credits for these. And we're allowing them to bypass coming in front of county council and giving the people that's out there in the community a say in what they want around them. I I I just, I I really can't support at all. I can't support these initiatives. I mean, you also got reductions of minimum front setback from eight to fifteen or fifteen feet. Reduction of the minimum set side setbacks by one or three feet. Uh, reduction in minimum rear setbacks. I mean, you're and there's some things in here that make sense for some of the commercial stuff, but I I mean, I think it limits the commercial, I think commercials should have got a lot more for this because the commercial buildings, those are the ones that don't get a lot of the Energy Star things. But the houses today get the Energy Star equipment. I mean, you cannot build a house today and you go, you go look on that hot water heater, Energy Star, you go look on the HVAC, Energy Star, uh, and that meets two of them. I mean, other things you can do, just not that. You can put a skylight in a house and that's going to give you energy credits. Um, use of vegetation or basically plants to plant around your HVAC unit, that's going to give you energy credits. Um, you know, construction for the chip Emerald Performance, uh, I mean, a lot of this stuff is standard practices already. So I mean, basically, we're losing out on what we can say and what we can do. And we're basically upzoning with energy credits. I I don't, I don't like that at all. I mean, that's not what we're trying to do here. Um, it's way aggressive, it it's not really green initiatives, it's, it's do what we want, when we want and don't let the public know about it, that's the way I see it. And that's, that's why I I don't, I don't like it. I I would like to hear some of the other commissioners' thoughts on it. I mean, you know, it's just, what do they think about it? I I would like to hear some more.
Just a staff, I I feel like when we talked about the green incentives, it was, I felt like the presentation was more geared towards the commercial stuff. I don't remember as on these lines.
Chair?
Mr. Dennis?
I know when Clarion talked about it, I don't ever remember them talking about stuff like this at all. I know they was highlighting these green initiatives um, for commercial. But I mean, the commercial stuff they got on here is, it doesn't, it doesn't really help them. I mean, it it looked great, it was a great talking point, but I think that talking point was to get this other stuff in uh, under the public's nose and our nose, that's the way I feel about it.
Looks like we're giving up a lot for stuff that's kind of industry standard.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Oh, not around. Um, I I was simply saying that I was not around when the ordinance was written. So I do not know the history, the legislative history of the ordinance, or ordinance. But um, they're not infrequent, I don't know if I'm, would characterize it as standard practice or as a blanket policy. And that if we are trying to create incentives, um, take appropriate provision for them. I mean, I don't, I don't have the same visceral reaction to visions. Certainly, reasonable minds can differ, but I'm just, I don't have that same.
Microphone, please.
I do. I do not have the same reaction to it uh, when it's designed to encourage. It's not as if we're giving away the house and the farm, uh, but we are trying to encourage those. Um, in a minute.
Right, thank you, Mr. Johnson, Jake.
Mr. Chairman?
Um, Mr. Frierson, go ahead.
Frierson?
Okay, I was going to say, this issue is very, very important, in my opinion, and very, very interesting. I love talking about this, but I think due to the lateness of the hours, almost seven o'clock, it would be really unfair and unjust to perhaps continue talking maybe another half hour or so. I would recommend that we perhaps take this up at a work session or at another meeting. We can have maybe some more experts here and give it um, more time and fresh energy. That's just my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Dr. Ron?
Good question, but I'll ask it anyway. Um, I I I hear the concern is that we're giving up a lot for what should be standard practice. Um, who, what are we giving up and who are the we?
Uh, it's kind of a general thing, like it it's basically taking anything out of our hands and letting credits go towards developers to get more houses in an area. I mean, it's not a bad thing for more houses in certain areas, but for something that's, I I mean, two of the things were Energy Star, a hot tankless water heater and central air conditioning. That's, I mean, I haven't sold a house today that's a new house and I haven't seen that sticker on all, both of them. I mean, it's already there, they're already doing it. I mean, this is just blindly giving it to them.
But I think part of what I saw was the the giving up is that you're, you're modifying the base uh, density for the other, the zoning district that's otherwise assigned to it. So I think what we saw was some of the districts that would shrink or it would increase the density by twenty five percent, other districts that would increase it by thirty percent. And then also just the other one, I think that Mr. Dennis referenced, that you could add a story, extra story to the house. So those would be some of the things that are, you know, quote unquote, uh, being given as incentives uh, for those green measure.
And and don't get me wrong, I mean, I'm all for the green initiative for certain things, but when it's already standard practice, why are we giving more when it's already standard? They're not getting it now, why give it to them in the future? Why not come up with something that's better than what we're already doing? I mean, that that's the whole thing, come up with future uh, things that's better in the future, not something that we've been doing since twenty twelve. I mean, if you go to the um, Energy Star gov site, it says these are standard practices since twenty twelve. You go look at houses, they're standard practices, you buy an HVAC unit at Lowe's, it's standard Energy Star. You buy, everything's Energy Star. Because, and the reason why everything's Energy Star, the companies that make Energy Star gets tax credits when they sell Energy Star equipment. So I mean, that's kind of why it's easy to do. And plus, Energy Star equipment is actually cheaper to make than non-Energy Star.
Mr. Chair? Uh, Mr. Yonki?
That's Mr. Yonki. Hey. I like Commissioner Frierson's idea, I'm taking this up again. Um, for a couple of reasons, you know, to let the public see this on an agenda and have an opportunity to come out and talk. Um, I agree with Mr. Dennis, it seems like they snuck this in under our noses. We have what a four hundred, five hundred page document that we've been reviewing.
Not the staff, I'm sure you don't mean the staff.
Uh, and I do not mean staff, for the record, I do not mean staff. I mean, the, you look on the front of it, it says what groups did this um, on there. And they're the ones nationally that do it and, I mean, it's on the front of the cover.
So my, my follow up comment was, Mr. Dennis, could you come up with a few motions for the next agenda? Specifically that you'd like to see removed from the?
Well, my my intent today was to get it in front of everybody's face so they kind of know, so they can look at it. Um, and then do what we feel fit today or in the future or whenever. But I mean, it was, it was, it was there and we almost missed it twice.
Mr. Chairman, all I'm saying is to, to Yonki and and my colleagues' point over here, before we jump to start talking about motions, let's have a broader hearing from different opinions that reflect a little bit broader perspective. And then we can weigh in on that before we start, because we're doing a lot right now with zero lot lines and density bonuses that are very restrictive, especially when we're talking about affordability. And making sure that there is a broad spectrum of off op- opportunities in terms of ability to deliver various products throughout the county. So
Yeah, I think
So let's find a time where we can have voices noticed and participate in the conversation.
You could uh, potentially have a work session that's targeted to, you know, this provision. And uh, maybe try to have that before the no- the next meeting, the November seventh meeting. I I I kind of catch that from a couple few of you generally, all right?
It might not need to be before our November meeting. Uh, you know, this green initiative is very important. And it really would be important, in my opinion, to bring in experts. And we don't want to just throw it together and say that we dealt with it, that's not fair. And then I've got my commissioner on the other end mentioned we want to make sure the public is aware. And when you do that comprehensively, it's not a good idea just to throw it together very quickly. But yet we can deal with it in depth when we plan it well.
And um, you know, let's, let's see where we land on that. Uh, certainly, anybody's welcome to make a motion that wants to make a motion. Um, again, just for the purposes of trying to uh, publish, you know, the intent, uh, the direction. Because I, I think what everyone has said, even folks that have spoken critical of, you know, what is there right now is that we do like the idea of green development incentives. It's a question of degrees, which is, you know, the question of so many of these things that we've talked about here on the land development could rewrite.
I I just think that the green development initiatives, the labeling of it is very misleading, very.
It was too easy, is what, sounds like what you're saying.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, well, we can talk about, uh, let's talk about calendaring later. Uh, let's just move on from now, is that okay, Mr. Dennis?
Yeah, I mean, and I just want to make clear, my intent was bring this up to put it in front of everybody's face. And out in the public's face, so they see it too. That that's kind of why I was there, because I, it it's like every day I look at this and then every day somebody else looks at it and everybody's looking at it and they go, hey, did you see this? Or, and then I see something, I'm like, you've got to be kidding me, you know, it's just one thing after another.
No, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, I think at your point, you know, you all have done a lot of hard work in getting us to this point and staff is, you know, well and are a number of different. So have to go through it and bring it, bring those items forward.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Yep. All right, so we are on nine, oh, nine four, I can't keep up anymore with this numbering.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, going back
Mr. Price?
Mr. Dennis's, um, well, what was added to the agenda, twenty six dash five point one three? So wh- where are we with that? Are we going to just take it up in another, or try to do a work session? Or is it going to wait till the November meeting or what is the will of the planning commission in regards to this?
I I wanted to pick that back up. I, I wanted to pick that back up maybe at the chairman's report. I'm just trying to wrap up the formal part of the um the agenda and then maybe circle back to that topic when we look at the calendar.
Chair.
Mr. Dennis.
I have a motion.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I would like, uh, my motion would be to have a work session prior to our November meeting to, as a commission, talk about it amongst ourselves. And then see how we're gonna proceed in depth, try to get some other ideas into it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Johnson.
Can we include as a part of that conversation on the um input piece?
Come back into the microphone and just finish that thought again, just.
I was just asking the, piggybacking on the comments earlier about the public input piece, just if we don't have a work session, we just kind of talk.
What, so for the public to have input?
No, for us to discuss methodology for increased, instead of waiting until we're essentially complete to have a public input, just to have a conversation internally among ourselves about that subject.
You're not saying to have public input at the work session?
Right, I'm not saying for us to have.
No, no, the work session is just for us.
Right, and I'm just adding, I'm just adding a second item to that work session for us to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we, we go into the work session with the intention of talking specifically about this section and kind of uh everything that comes with it, I guess.
Yeah, that was my intent. Oh, just this, us.
And include. Are you talking about public participation generally or specific to this provision? Oh, okay. Uh, sure, we can talk about public participation, right? Uh, Mr. Dennis?
Yeah, and uh, we'll add a, um, I'll amend that motion for a um talk about public participation in the future.
Alright, uh, let's take a vote. I'll, I'll second the motion for a work session before our November 7th meeting to discuss the provisions of 26 dash 5.13D as well as public participation.
Unreadiness?
Uh, okay.
I just have a question. I'm not against the work session. I'm just trying to figure out what is the urgency to do it before the November meeting?
No, November was just a goal that we had to see if we could make a recommendation as to both the map and a set of text amendments. But yeah, I mean, that, that's the only reason why. If, if it's not ready at that time, obviously can make a decision and it's not ready to go.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so uh, Mr. Dennis's motion and I seconded it. So, Mr. Price, would you take a vote?
Those in favor, um, the work session, that's what we're scheduling, a work session?
Yes.
That's 26 dash 5.13 and also the public notification process um that we undertake. Is there a particular date or time we're gonna look to do this or?
I guess we're already here. I was just hoping to talk about calendar later, but I guess we can talk about it now.
I mean, we can, we can do that. I just want to, as long as we're gonna take that matter up because we'll need to make sure everything's, you know, chambers is reserved and everything. Um, but, okay, those in favor? Brown?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonkey?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bryerson?
Aye.
Vince?
Durant?
Aye.
Sir?
Aye.
And if um, the staff can maybe take a look at potential chambers availability. While we cover the map, I don't know if that's possible or not, but.
We're still looking at three o'clock as the time or earlier or later?
I mean, my motion is just whatever we can get and we can get there, that's what we get. I mean, not to lock us down to eight or three or seven at night. I mean, my intent was just to get us to talk about it. This is getting old, talking about it to myself and then bringing.
But just think on that, if staff could look at availability and then let's, I, I just would like to get through the mapping part and, and then come back to that. So we've got, we're, we're on the map piece, uh, the remapping process. We've made a ton of headway just as far as saying that the baseline was gonna be the equivalency table and the newly adopted code. We had these conversations that we needed to have to deal with legacy RU and figure out where uh AG, HM and RT were gonna fall and we covered all of that. And then I, I, we talked a little bit too, I think it was OI that we needed to deal with.
M1.
M1, okay. I know we want to talk about that some today. Who, who wants to kick that off?
Um, one of the things we did was we, we took, um, you, you should have two maps before you begin to. Okay, so you have two, uh, two maps before you. Uh, and what we did was because a lot of work had already gone into um, when we were proposing our map, um, back in, I guess in February, that all the work had gone and looking at the M1 zoning designations that we pretty much just kind of copied those since um and so some of those M1 areas became excuse me, became GC, some of those became light industrial and in some cases, some of them became EMP. And that was because those were actually based on the, either the existing use of the property or the, the um character of the area that it was located within, the what would be the more appropriate zoning designation. Um, one of the things that we did, also if you look at the second map that has some numbers on it, um, those were areas that we just kind of highlighted because the, the changes were going from M1, they were not going from M1 to some type of commercial zoning designation. Uh, they were going from M1 to either a residential or a agricultural zoning designation. And so I think those would be ones that you may want to look at a little more um in depthly um for discussion purposes. Okay, so we're gonna just get this one.
One that has all purple on it, that's the one that just is reporting what was
M1.
M1 under, currently under the 2005 land development code?
Yes, sir. And if you see the one that says remapping restart M1 based on the equivalency table, those are the ones that were, will be changed to one of our newer um designations, especially for commercial uses and industrial. Because those would be the equivalency for M1.
One that's got the numbers on it, one, two, three, four, five, six, I see numbers, uh, seven.
Yes, those were just labeled for, I think for more discussion purposes because I think most of these made sense just going from M1 to let's just say LI or even HI or EMP or GC, one of those, they kind of stayed within that same line of a, of a commercial or industrial designation. But the ones that have the numbers beside them, those actually went to either residential or a um agricultural zoning designation. I think in some cases even uh open space. And I would think we might want to just highlight those and we could actually go to those particular areas using our county um GIS and show you why we um selected those areas to go from, not from M1 to a non-commercial um designation.
The, the one with the numbers on it has kind of a broader set of possible proposed rezoned districts. It could be both commercial and non-commercial?
Yes.
Whereas the one that's multicolored with no numbers, that one's a more limited.
They're the same. Those are the same. We just have the one with the numbers on it. So that for discussion purposes, I won't tell you, we'll go to your left or someplace scratching your back. So I just tell you exactly where to go.
Okay. So there's seven in particular you wanted to talk about?
Yes.
Everybody follow what we have here?
I am. Basically the map with the numbers, that's the areas they want to talk about.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
I didn't think there was any chance we were gonna be last meeting, but we're only like 57 minutes away. Four hours and 19 minutes.
I won't use the entire 57. Yeah, again, um, we'll look at this, we can take this up at the work session.
Excellent idea.
But you know, just, just showing you this as an example, the piece that Tommy has highlighted right now, we have that designated to go to the R2. Go to R2. And that was based on um this, you know, the adjacency of the residential along that area.
That's labeled number one on the map.
Yes, R3, yes. So just wanted to see the reasons why those didn't automatically be go to a commercial designation. Also, it wasn't um appropriate, I think as Matthew was telling me earlier, um, not appropriate um for some type of, you know, EMP uh because it doesn't have direct access onto an interstate.
Do you, um, maybe you could just email us the tax map numbers for these seven and we could look at them?
Okay.
Uh, in advance of the work session?
Okay, and, and I, I'll tell you what I can do. I'll, I'll make it kind of simple. I'll send you a little email basically with numbers one through seven and I'll tell you, include the tax maps and I'll just kind of give a little brief sentence or two. It doesn't take much to tell you why we thought that was more appropriate. And then that way you'll have that for more discussion when we come in for the work session.
That, that sounds good. Any objection to that? Sounds good to me. Alright. Um, otherwise, I guess from staff, have we addressed everything that we need to address? Make sure there's no holes in the map, that we have a complete map?
I, I do believe that everything has been covered.
Alright, great.
And especially with, I think what we're gonna allow, you know, that, that year um for people to come in within the rule, any rural property to come back in and for free and petition for a zoning designation?
Okay, yeah, yep, that, that provision is there, a, a one-year waiver of the application fee for uh owners of former RU parcels that uh believe they should be uh rezoned to something other than what we stick them with. Um, okay, so that covers the mapping. Yeah, um, we good there? Um, anything else on that item before we move to the chairman's report?
Um, no, sir.
Okay, uh, nothing else from the commission? Alright, just again, thank you all for your time and the efforts. This has been so much work and um just so very valuable. And I know that many in the community are very appreciative. I've heard it here and there uh from individuals and, you know, it's all of us, uh, especially, you know, the few of you that have been with us for a short period of time, just a lot of work trying to get caught up in a short period of time. I, I certainly look at this as a, like us coming to the end of the first phase of what we may want to do with the land development code and the comprehensive plan in the near future. I don't look at this as the end by any means. Uh, this is just round in, in my opinion, so that's just kind of how I try to look at all this. You know, council will have their opportunity to voice their opinions on all this stuff. We're making recommendations. I feel like we have followed uh their request of us, which was to restart the remapping process and then provide uh recommended text amendments uh along with that. So thank you all again. Uh, let's uh, can, can we get some proposed dates? Uh, do we have any for a work session? Before November 7th?
I guess, is there a certain date or time that doesn't work for anyone? Through the process of elimination.
I'm out of town next week.
No for next week.
I'll, I'll put it this way. You make it, I'll be there. Unless I'm in the hospital, which that has happened before, but you know.
The week of the 17th then?
From today? That's like Monday?
Availability, 17th? Or do we need to wait and ask? 17th would that work?
And we can put it on the calendar. Um, can we have a, um, alternative date just in case?
Uh, any objections from the commission there? Any particular time of day, who just wanted to shoot for 3pm again? Okay. Gary, don't keep me here four and a half hours on the 17th.
Better do your homework.
Uh, alright, promise I will.
Could we have it earlier and then you all treat us to lunch? I mean, let's get real here.
Alright, motion for Gio to treat us to lunch on the 17th.
He can box it in as long as it's for a good restaurant, you know?
12 noon on the 17th? I knew you didn't want to say no to Ms. Bryerson.
Well, I had that other one on my birthday. That food was yum yum delicious.
We'll be having that again.
Just make it happen.
Okay, 17th at noon is what we'll try to confirm with the county, uh, the rooms available. And uh, Mr. Price, anything else from you for a planning director's report? Okay, uh, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hold on just one second. Someone said something earlier about, said something to me about parking permits. I forgot who it was because it was so long ago. Any updates on that?
Ms. Bryerson, that, that was me. Uh, I'll, I'll talk to you after. There's a, they're working on getting you yours.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Anything else? Is there much to adjourn?
Thank, some of.
Alright, moved. Seconded, alright. All in favor, say aye. Aye. I'll adjourn, thank you.